Appreciate you.
Good evening, everyone. Said, "Good evening, everyone." This is the City of Dania Beach Regular Meeting on May the 13th. It is now 7:00 PM, and I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Mayor Davis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
I'm here.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Here.
Commissioner Romoli?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan? City Attorney Bootses?
Here.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
Mayor UFquorum?
Thank you, City Clerk. And at this time, if you would please bow your heads for a moment of silence. And as you do so, let's keep the McCombs family in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love hearing the kids say the Pledge of Allegiance. Good job, guys. Next up, we have our Presentations and Special Event Approvals. Item 3.1, Request for Proclamation for the Star Center National Maritime Day, May 22nd, 2025, sponsored by Commissioner Ryan. Do we have consensus for that?
Yes.
All right, you've got consensus.
Thank you.
Next, we have item... And then we also have a Turquoise Takeover Week, May 5th through the 11th, sponsored by Commissioner Llewellyn. Do we have consensus for that? All right. Excellent, Commissioner. Next, we have Item 3.2, Our Earth Day Art Competition Winners, sponsored by Mayor Davis. Let's give all of our contestants a hand. If you don't know, Earth Day is one of my favorite holidays. Especially, we did such an amazing job. This year was our fifth year celebrating Earth Day in the City of Dania Beach in a big way. It is our fourth year having an art contest. And I can't tell you, each year, we continue to elevate the art in Dania Beach, our camps, our organizations. All of our kids come out to participate. And this year, we had a pirate theme infused with the Earth Day Art Contest. So I am so thrilled that we have all of our city team, our Parks and Rec Director, Cassie Warren, our camp directors, our nonprofits, everyone coming to celebrate all of our Earth Day Art Contest winners, the parents. Thank you all for celebrating our kids and celebrating art and sustainability in the City of Dania Beach. So give all of yourselves a hand right now. And drum roll, please, kids. Let's do a little drum roll. Yes. You can tell I used to be a teacher. All right, so we are going to go from the bottom to the top. And we are going to name each one of the art contest winners from each center. And then we are going to name the overall art contest winner for Earth Day. So, from PJ Millie Camp, we have Juan Sanchez. Juan, stand up. And I have to give Juan a little shout out because Juan was our overall contest art winner last year. And that is his lion. And he will be able to take that home. So know that your artwork stays in City Hall for a full year when you win the Earth Day Art Contest. Next, from Olson Middle School, we have Kylie Steen or Kylie Stein. Kylie, are you here? I see Principal Giancarlo. Principal Giancarlo is representing Olson Middle School for Kylie. All right, thank you, Principal Giancarlo, for being here. And then we have Love Our Nation. Stand up, Love Our Nation. Yes. It was a group effort that they won for theirs. And next, we have a group effort winner from Frost Park. Where are my Frost Park winners? Anybody Frost Park? We have our Frost Park. And then I do see Principal Billings and Dania Elementary. Do we have Dania Elementary? There we go, Dania Elementary. Very good, okay. And next, we have CW Thomas Camp Group Effort. Let's give it up for CW Thomas. Another drum roll, please. Our overall Earth Day Art Contest winner with the pirate theme is none other than... Where's his name? Andrew Jimenez from PJ Millie Camp. Andrew comes in next to your artwork here. Now, I wanted to create the suspense there. Very good job. And so, I want to thank all of you for every year coming and taking part of our Earth Day Art Contest. You all did a phenomenal job incorporating real pieces of plastic and using real materials. Andrew, I really would love... Do you want to tell people what you made your pelican out of? All right, let's get him up here and let's tell him really quickly about what it's made of. Ms. Vivian, help him to the mic here.
Hello, I'm Andrew. So for my pelican, for the feathers, I used the coffee lids. And for the water, I used jar lids and bottle cups. And for the beak, I used cardboard.
Fantastic. Good job. And I think, Commissioner, if we want to take a picture with the art contest winners, they did such a great job. So we're going to have Suzette direct us because there's a lot of us to stay up here and let the kids and let the art contest winners come down. How about that? Yes.
That's why I said she's going to tell us what to do.
From different centers. We had a center, you know, winner, and then we have an overall for... Oh, because I had them stand next to your artwork. Let her come. I love it. I love it.
That's what I said.
And we have one more surprise. I couldn't leave without doing one more surprise for Earth Day. I'm sorry, guys. I love this day so much. But every year, we have elevated the game. If you see all of the artwork down here, PJ Millie is our center winner. And they have it, yes. Stand up, PJ Millie. And I do want you to come to the front again. And I want you... You're just going to listen to me. We didn't plan this. Come on, come, 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 come back up, PJ Millie. And I want you all, when you get up here, on the count of three... I'm just making this up. I want you to point to the person who taught you how to do this artwork. One, two, three. Ms. Vivian Camper, stand up. And we have a specific honor just for you. So if you stay right there, Ms. Vivian, we appreciate what you have been able to do. And this is the fourth year in a row that Ms. Vivian Camper has come and given art direction to these amazing children. And so we have this beautiful piece of artwork for Ms. Vivian. Say a couple of words, Ms. Vivian, and we're going to take a picture and we're going to move on. But we want to thank you for all that you do in order to inspire our kids, not just with artwork, but for earth and sustainability and all that you do for the City of Dania Beach.
Thank you. Oh, my God, I'm extremely proud of all of these children. They worked really hard. It wasn't like, it didn't take us a week. It took a long time to do this. Those are Starbucks cups, and there is coffee stains on them. So just so you know. So yes, I told them about the pirate theme. They created, they told me what they wanted to do. I guided and led them, but I was mesmerized. One of them told me, "Ms. Vivian, why can't we just go out and buy art supplies?" So that resonated with me that I didn't... Not fully explained, but it didn't resonate in them. And I had to do it again. And once they understood the connection, they ran with it. And that was the winner. Okay? It took him, for the first two weeks, he was not combative, but like, "Oh, oh, you know, why can't we just go out and buy art supplies?" And I knew that I had to do better. And then it ended up, because then he was just cutting away at those coffee cups and doing, and it showed, and he won. And I'm extremely proud of all of them. Some of them, this is their second year in a row. And I'd like to thank the mayor and commissioners for doing this every year because my two passions are children and the environment. So when these two collide, I'm very happy. Thank you.
Students, grab your art on the way out. Accept the winner. The main winner, because you're all winners.
And I'd also like to thank my management team for accepting my craziness. To my managers, thank you, the three of you, for seeing me. And I was like, "Ah," and just going with it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Vivian. This is what it's all about, folks. Thank you, guys. And a great job to all of our kids, to all of our staff. And we will move on. Bye, guys. Oh, yes, come get your artwork. Next, we have, I'm just going to go on to the... I should let you guys clear out a little bit. Thank you, Ms. Vivian. You did such a good job. Okay, Item 3.3, we have a special event application for 2025 Juneteenth Celebration. Do I have consensus for that? Yep, we have consensus for Juneteenth. And then next, we have Proclamations, moving on to Item 4.1. May is... And we're just going to settle down a little bit. But May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas the National Alliance on Mental Health Illness, NAMI, Broward's mission is to enhance awareness and provide programs in Broward County that support world-class system for treatment and recovery of individuals facing mental health challenges. NAMI Broward delivers support, education, and advocacy to nurture better understanding, coping strategies, and positive outcomes for people and their families navigating the complexities of mental health. I'm going to ask if in the back, we could calm down just a little bit. Thank you. Whereas comprehensive healthcare encompasses mental healthcare, which must be accessible to all individuals, irrespective of race, gender, age, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, values, and cultural beliefs. It is vital that these factors are integrated into treatment, allowing the community to become a bastion of support. And whereas the breadth and mental health crisis affecting both children and adults is profound, one in five adults shall encounter a mental health challenge in any given year. Half of all mental health conditions begin by age 14, and 75% by 24 years old. Prompt intervention leads to more favorable outcomes. And whereas half the children and adults living with mental health challenges never receive transformative treatment due to barriers to, barriers to care and stigma, the resilience and recovery journey of individuals diagnosed with mental health conditions should be celebrated rather than stigmatized. And whereas mental health challenges are not criminal issues, nonetheless, individuals with mental health diagnoses are disproportionately represented in jails and prisons. NAMI recommends the implementation of crisis intervention training for law enforcement officers, diversion programs, and mobile crisis response teams that effectively reduce involvement in the justice system and enhance safety. And whereas individuals experiencing mental health challenges are capable of leading meaningful lives and contributing significantly to society, communities aid those with mental health, mental health challenges by ensuring access to quality care and appropriate supports. Now therefore, on behalf of the City of Daniel Beach, I Joyce L. Davis, Mayor of the City of Daniel Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Daniel Beach to promote health awareness and to inspire those living with mental health challenges to seek support and know that you are not alone. At this time, we have someone to come up from Broward County. Would you introduce yourself and we're going to, uh, present the proclamation to you?
Great, thank you very much. I'm Dr. Joe Oravec, CEO of NAMI Broward County. And with me is Suzette Fleischman, who is one of our board members. And we are incredibly grateful. I do have some prepared comments, if that's okay?
Sure.
Great. Thank you. And again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I wanna express our deep appreciation, um, for this proclamation and recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. I think when you see before you the children and how they are able to really model the way for those of us that are a little bit more older. This year's national NAMI message is powerful, just as their art has been powerful. In every story, there is strength. That story may belong to a neighbor, a colleague, a voted individual, a parent, or a child. And every time we acknowledge it, we break down the stigma and open the door to hope. That strength is found in the families we support, the individuals who attend our groups, and the community members who show up, like every single one of you. Ready to end stigma and start real conversations. NAMI is the nation's largest grassroots mental health organization. And NAMI Broward is proud to serve as your local grassroots mental health nonprofit. Here in Broward, we provide completely free, evidence-based programs, including peer and family support groups, education classes like Family to Family and NAMI Basics, outreach presentations to schools, community groups, and first responders, all designed to help people feel heard, seen, and supported. No insurance and no diagnosis required. Your proclamation articulates the data of how we all need to embrace mental health for all. And while we receive little federal and state funding, limited support locally, we are committed to showing up in every single zip code, meeting people where they are. That's why moments like this ma- matter. This proclamation is clear, mental health matters in Daniel Beach. We are proud to bring our services directly into the community, libraries, schools, face centers, not just offices. And we rely on local partnerships, like this one, to keep those programs free and accessible. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention a growing movement here in Broward, Broward County. We also invite our business community and city departments to engage in our stigma-free workplace initiatives. A training and awareness program helping cities, businesses, and organizations support employee mental wellness at every level. Several neighboring municipalities are already involved, and we'd love to bring it here to Daniel Beach. I'd also like to say two final invitations to you. Matt Arts is a host for us in our fundraising benefit on Thursday, May 29th. So that is the Thursday after Memorial Day. You all have been, we've sent an email to the city clerk. You all have been invited as my personal guest to that event. We hope that you are able to attend to that. Um, and then also, and we invite you to Saturday, October 4th. It's a little bit in the future, but we're already planning for it. At Nova Southeastern University for the NAMI Mental Health Walk for All. Many part- people participate in the American Heart Association Walk, the American Cancer Society Walk. We invite you to be part of the total wellness package when we talk about walking for mental health. It's a morning of celebration, community, and purpose. We're proud, we would be proud to have the City of Daniel Beach walk with us. So thank you again for standing with NAMI Broward County and reminding your residents that they are never alone. Together, we're building a stronger, healthier, and more compassionate Broward County. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would please come up and accept the proclamation, I think that we can stay in up here and... Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you, thank you again. Thank you for letting us know about all those resources. And, uh, we look forward to participating in some future events and initiatives, thank you. Uh, next up, we have Turquoise Takeover Week, May 5th through 11th, sponsored by Commissioner Lori Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think this is maybe the third year that we've done this. Um, and it was originally brought to me by Michael Garcia, who is here tonight. Um, the American Lung Association does various events every year. And, and in May, they do what's called a turquoise takeover, um, to promote basically awareness about lung diseases and the American Lung Association and the different, um, things that, that they do. And last week, actually, the Vice Mayor and myself actually did attend an event um, that the, uh, American Lung Association did put on. And they actually chose to do it in Daniel Beach over at Toro. Um, it was a lovely evening, it was a really nice event, um, nice group of people from all over the place. And, um, they just, they, they do a lot to promote awareness of the, the different conditions that are out there. So I'm, I'm happy that they, um, continue to do this, and I'm happy to support. And the city is happy to support, and I'm happy that you chose our city this year for your events. And I know we have a few people who are either current or former board members that are here tonight. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation, and we'll present it to you. Um, this is, uh, proclamation of the Mayor and City of Daniel Beach, Florida. Whereas Lung Force is a national initiative led by the American Lung Association to defeat lung cancer. And whereas Lung Force's annual turquoise takeover celebration unites the nation to raise a critical awareness of lung cancer, the nation's leading cancer killer. And whereas about every 2.2 minutes, a person in the United States is diagnosed with lung cancer. And whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths for women and men. And whereas lung cancer screening saves lives, and advocacy and increased awareness will result in more high-risk individuals getting screened. And whereas public support for research and funding will result in new treatments and better methods of early detection. Now therefore, on behalf of our Mayor Joyce L. Davis and the Daniel Beach City Commission, we do hereby proclaim May 5th through 11th, 2025, as turquoise takeover week in the City of Daniel Beach, and do encourage everyone to become educated about lung cancer, its risk factors, and early detection. Thank you. And I know we have Michael, it is Violet, and Tommy, do you wanna come up too? Oh, okay, perfect.
It's a good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Llewellyn. On behalf of the American Lung Association, we are appreciative that the City of Daniel Beach is partnering up with us to raise awareness. As you mentioned, Commissioner, we, we did the kickoff, uh, at Toro. Um, Vice Mayor and, and yourself came out, we wore the, we wore the sombreros, it was still Cinco de Mayo as well. Um, so we appreciate it, and, and it's about raising awareness. Um, and I've gone through various cities to give some facts, because it's really important. Lung cancer has killed more people than any other cancer. That's period. That, the, I think you can put breast cancer to all the other cancers. Lung cancer has killed more people than any other, other cancer. Why is that? It's a, it's a few reasons. One, there's a stigma behind lung cancer, right? The stigma, unlike other cancers, is you smoke, you deserve what you get, right? Um, lung cancer, no one deserves to get cancer, right? That's first. Um, other cancers don't have that stigma. No one knows why women get breast cancer or all these other cancers. So just because you smoke, um, doesn't necessarily mean you deserve it. There's another, um, that leads to low, not, it, it leads to people not knowing about lung cancer, which then leads to low, um, screenings. That leads to lower early detection. And I think for lung cancer, it's like a 24%, it's very low. And as we all know, with any disease, specifically lung cancer, I mean cancers, early detection is the key. And that's not happening because of the stigma. The other thing that people are not aware of, two-thirds of the people that die from lung cancer are non-smokers, people that quit. So non-smokers, right? That's the issue. I don't smoke, I go to the doctor, doctor say, you don't need a screening, you don't smoke, because it's just this correlation, you smoke, you get cancer. If you don't smoke, you don't get cancer. That doesn't make sense, because like I said, people get cancer, and you get brain cancer, you get all these cancers, but there's nothing really that correlates the cancer. So that leads to that low number, which then leads to, in Florida, it'll be 18,000 new diagnoses this year of lung cancer, 18,000, right? As the proclamation stated, one in every two minutes. Here's another number. One in 18 individuals will be diagnosed with lung cancer, one in 18. So that means we're gonna know, everyone here is gonna know a person with lung cancer at some point, 'cause it's one in 18. And this is all because of the stigma. We don't get the same research dollars, people are not checking for it. And it's just about raising awareness, raising awareness, because with the screenings, early detection helps people survive and get the treatment. By the time most people are diagnosed, it is very late in the game. I started 10 years ago with Violet, because we were, we're from leadership Broward, and this is one of the, um, organizations that pitched the idea. The person that they used at our presentation was a mother of three children, and I think she was 35 years old. And the children were, the oldest was about nine, so the other two were younger. By the time they diagnosed her with cancer, with the lung cancer, she never smoked. She died at 35, 36, leaving three little babies behind. And that's why we do it, to raise awareness. Um, and we, we hope that people, this gets on people's ra- uh, radar, getting checked, early awareness, and we thank the city for partnering up with us, because it brings awareness. Because when I say these numbers, most people don't know. I, I see everybody's faces when I, when I say certain numbers, and people are shocked by these numbers. Especially when we say lung cancer kills more people than anything, any other cancer, period. But it's got the lowest, um, you know, lowest number of, of, of people checking for it, right? People think breast cancer, they've done a great job of, of, of advertising that. Men with the prostate cancer, all these other cancers, but lung cancer, for whatever reason, and I think is related to that stigma. Um, and people not aware, there are a lot of people dying that don't have lung cancer, that don't smoke. So we thank the city, we thank the Commissioner. We look forward to partnering up with you, um, next year. We have big ideas to spread the word, and we thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Garcia, and those numbers are shocking, uh, truly shocking, so.
I actually, and just to throw in there, I actually do have a very good friend right now who is battling lung cancer and not a smoker, not exposed to any chemicals, nothing, no asbestos, nothing like that, and same thing with her mother, actually passed away from lung cancer, same thing, not a smoker, not anything. So it's, it happens more often than you, than you realize, so. Do we wanna take a picture also, up front?
Next year, when we do it in Daniel, I'm expecting all five Commissioners to attend. Not two, the three, I'm expecting all five. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Violet, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, once again, and thank you for Commissioner Llewellyn for bringing the proclamation to the Commission. Next, we will move on to our administrative reports. And we will have the, the first one by our city manager, item 5.1, Madam Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Team, and esteemed guests. Um, thank you for the proclamations that you've given today. And I wanted to take this opportunity to also thank our HR Director and our HR team. Um, we have a program, um, for mental health and to support all our employees, and it's called the Employees, Employee Assistant Program. We also have an app that it's new, it's called Headspace. Um, our city commission makes it a priority for us to retain and recruit and promote the very best. So we're constantly investing in our team, and we wanted to let you know that mental health and, and mental health awareness and supporting our team is something that we do. So thank you for all that you're continuing to do. Um, with that said, there has been so much that has occurred. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, and our, our, our guests that are here, our residents that are here and watching at home since our last meeting on April 22nd. I, I want to thank and commend Sasha Ramos, our procurement manager, for totally revamping and strengthening our procurement processes. Procurement was a, a, an area of challenge for the city in the past, and we are really leading the way here in South Florida. So I'm very grateful for the work that's happening with our procurement team, working with all our vendors. And our objective is to, to procure the very best products in a very ethical way, um, saving the city as most, the most amount of money as possible. I also wanna let you know that on April 23rd, we cut the ribbon... I also want to let you know that on April 23rd, we cut the ribbon at Mulliken Park. If you haven't been to Mulliken Park, which is located at 2305 Southwest First Street, go by that park, it's a beautiful gem, it, we're so proud of it, and I see our mayor and our Commissioners nodding their head. It's a truly remarkable, the return on the investment in Tallahassee, ladies and gentlemen, every day we can tell you about what is going on in our city, but not just funded by taxpayer dollars, but funded by an unprecedented amount of grants. And, look, he just happens to be, like, shaking his head, and there's Ron Book, who represents and works for us in Tallahassee 365 days a year, so thank you so much that you happened to be here tonight, very, very proud of that park. I also want to let you know then, on the afternoon of April 24th, we celebrated our second annual Arbor Day, and I want to thank our deputy city manager, our public services team, our mayor, and our city commission, because every year, we take what we've been doing, and we make it better. This year, we partnered with the CRA and with a patch. We have 50 more trees left, so if you want a free tree, just come by the patch, and they're really beautiful trees. The crepe myrtles are gone, but we still have oaks for our community to be able to pick up. Next year, we're looking to even be more impactful on Arbor Day, so there's already planning in the works for next year. On April 25th, via an invitation from State Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez, who also happens to be the Vice President for the Miami Association of Realtors, I was very proud to represent the managers here in Broward County and the great city of Dania Beach in the Tri-County 2025 Real Estate Summit that was held at the Seminole Harbor Rock. Well, I was able to convey to the over 300, 400 people that were present, is the great work that is occurring here in Dania Beach, in our building department, in community development, and the majority of the Realtors and the investors that were there said, what is happening in Dania Beach in regards to how quickly we respond to our people, whether it's a small project in one of our residents' homes, they're adding a bathroom, or they're renovating, or whether it's a multimillion-dollar project. And there's Eleanor Norena, who is the Department Director, and we're so grateful for everything that you're doing, because we're really leading the way in all of South Florida, and everybody knows about it, so thank you so much for that. We have concluded all our budget meetings with all our department directors, our one-on-ones with the mayor and our Vice Mayor and commission, and we are very, very happy that we are almost there. June 1st is gonna be a critical day, and then July 1st will be the final day that we get all the information for all the revenues via taxes, and on July 8th, we will be preparing our draft budget to the mayor and commission. And I want to thank our city team, because this year's a very challenging team. It's easy to put together a budget when money's coming from over, but when money is tight, it really allows us to really think outside the box, and that's exactly what we're doing with every single one of our departments. On April 29th, our senior team and I worked together, we spent the whole morning and early afternoon working with Law Summit as we craft together the amendment of our adopted strategic plan that basically provides the compass and the direction for our city. And this past weekend, our mayor and our city commission, we spent a whole morning and part of the afternoon, they're doing their part, and we're looking forward that in the next commission meeting, we're gonna be bringing forward our amended strategic plan that's really gonna lead the way for the city for decades to come, so very, very happy about that. On May 1st, we had a meeting with Michael Goodman, he's the CEO of Goodman Public Relations. I met with him, with Director Norena, and what is happening in our city is not going unrecognized, and I just wanted to share with everybody that our city has been chosen to be the first city in the whole tri-rail corridor to have a beautiful art piece, and we're gonna be working together with Broward County. But right here, our very own city has been chosen as the first art public project, and that will be launched in early 2026. Our tri-rail station is located at 580 Gulfstream Way. The process will begin with our Arts Board and our Arts Consultant, working together with Broward County and various key members of the art community in South Florida, so we're very, very excited about that, and to lead the way for all of South Florida. This past Thursday, May 1st, Director Cassie Warren and I meticulously reviewed the conceptual rendering for Phase 1 of the Olsen Park Project. Ladies and gentlemen, we have seven acres that were not being utilized, that now will become part of a beautiful, beautiful park here in our city. It's gonna be tremendous, it's going to be a game changer for our community, and Phase 1 will be approximately $4.3 million, and we anticipate that by the end of this calendar year, we will have a total of $5.8 million. And that $5.8 million is being, it's coming to us from all the new construction. So, this beautiful park is going to be 100% funded by the construction and the development that you do see in our city, and we're very excited with Phase 1, and we'll also be able to kick off Phase 2 next year, so it's gonna be a total game changer for the southeast community, and we're truly very much, very excited. On another great note, Suzette Rodriguez, our Public Information Officer, was appointed to the Board of Directors of the Florida Municipal Communications Association. This is an incredible honor for our city. I am so proud of the work that's going on with Suzette and Annette in Communications, and our video for recruiting new employees, which was headed by our superstar over there, our HR Director, won a really amazing award, and to be recognized in the state and everybody realizing the great work that's happening here makes me extremely happy, so we're very, very, very happy about that. We're also thrilled to share that our employment recruitment video will be something that now other cities are using. So, and I was having this conversation with Commissioner Ryan, we are glad when Broward's first city can lead the way for others to follow. So, it is evident that our city team and every single department is working on all cylinders. I also want to thank our BSO police team, we have made key arrests at a park, and that's because of your investment in that tower and those cameras. Not only is it a deterrent, but we're making key arrests, and people are gonna have to take their crime and business that is not aligned with our city someplace else, but I wanted to take the time to thank them as well. And this concludes my report, thank you so much.
Thank you, City Manager, for that very thorough report, great things happening in the city all around, and we will move on to item 5.2, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone in the audience. Two quick things, we have a request for a time change for the May 27th meeting, to have it start about an hour earlier, for 6:00 p.m. The Vice Mayor has a family obligation, now so that the meeting be brought up by an hour.
I'm fine with that, you have consensus, you have consensus.
No. No, we. Thank you. Thank you, and then one last thing, you know, we always have to come to you for use of the logo, because that is your policy, and Procurement is attending the BSO Public Safety Expo next week, and the logo wanted to be placed on the flyers, we want to make sure that's okay with all of you.
It's fine.
Thank you so much.
Consensus, yeah.
Yep. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, City Attorney. Now, we have item 5.3, City Clerk Reminders.
Yes, next up, we have the May 27th City Commission meeting at 6:00 p.m. After that, we've got the June 10th CRA Board meeting at 6:00 p.m., and the June 10th City Commission meeting at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, City Clerk, appreciate that, and up next, we have our public safety reports. It's been a while, Captain, come on up, Captain Jason Terrala.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. I'll start by saying too, I know you touched on the proclamation for Mental Health Month, and just to touch base on that, all of our deputies, it's one of these Sheriff's Initiatives, and you touched it when you spoke about crisis intervention training, all of our deputies, it's mandatory through the Sheriff's Initiative, that every single patrol deputy gets crisis intervention training certified, which is a 40-hour course. So, just so you know, all your Dania Beach deputies must go through that class, and if they come to the road before going to there, as soon as the next available class is offered, we send our deputies to that class. So, that specialized training in dealing with the mentally ill, because like you said, dealing with mentally ill, that is not a crime, you know, those are people in crisis, and that class helps us identify those issues and help those individuals who are in crisis. So, I just wanted to touch base on that.
Thank you so much for that, Chief, Captain.
Same thing. So, earlier last week, our deputies responded over to the Popeyes, reference a armed robbery that just occurred. Upon arrival, our deputies made contact with the victim, who advised that she was robbed at gunpoint. Our deputies were able to canvass the area, and they were actually able to locate the suspect, they detained him, and on his person, they located a fully-loaded Glock 40 firearm on his person. While they were conducting their investigation, a second victim showed up on scene with our deputies and said that they were also robbed by the same individual a little bit earlier in the day at the Popeyes. That individual was positively identified for both armed robberies, and he was placed in custody, interviewed by our Criminal Investigations detectives, and taken to the main jail and charged with multiple counts of armed robbery. Also, a couple weeks ago, we received a shooting over in the northwest section. The victim explained that a few minutes earlier to our arrival, there was a verbal altercation that was occurring out in front of his house with a bunch of juveniles, also involving his nephew. He went out to break it up, and at some point, there were shots fired in his direction. Our detectives began their investigation, and they identified an individual in that case. Last week, on Saturday night, we received another shooting in the area of 80 Southwest 8th Avenue. We knew that that location was where the individual we were looking for on the previous case lived. Our Viper Team responded out, which is our Violent Crimes Intervention Unit, like a fugitive unit, and we were actually able to identify that juvenile, we located him, and we placed him in custody. While our search incident were rest, we were actually able to locate a Glock firearm, and that individual was placed in custody for the attempted murder of that individual from the previous case and taken out the streets.
Great job.
It was a fantastic job, great police work.
Hundred percent.
And last, another great, great case, but one of our deputies being fantastic and alert. Earlier this week, we received a stabbing over at 300 block of Southwest 16th Street. Dania Beach Fire Rescue responded, they administered life-saving emergency response to the victim and transported him to the hospital. Our detectives began their investigation and had very little to go on. The victim, once he recovered at the hospital, he was able to give a description of the suspect. One of our deputies, being very alert, got the information of the suspect, and through his investigation, through his being proactive in the streets, he actually was able to get in touch with someone who gave him an idea who it might be. He was canvassing the area, canvassing the area, and he was actually able to locate this suspect at the 7-Eleven a couple nights ago. He went up to the suspect, he detained him. During their course in the investigation, this individual admitted to stabbing the individual in this incident, and also were able to identify the knife that was involved in that case and recovered the knife. That individual was placed in custody for attempted murder and taken to the main jail. So, all three of these cases I highlighted tonight were violent crimes that occurred in our city, and all three of those have been cleared by arrest, which is fantastic.
That's fantastic.
And last, we have Memorial Day coming up, we'll have deputies assigned to the beach for Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, we'll have deputies permanently assigned to the beach to make sure that we have safety on our beach at all times, and we also have our ongoing action plan for Dania Point. And last but not least, Detective Hoff and Sessions, they're gonna be working with our annual summer break spot with the summer camps to make sure that we have our, all the resources coming in, all the BSO, motormen, the helicopters, the tours, and we'll be doing all that with the juveniles, again, and the kids, the youth, this summer, to make sure they get the full experience with BSO in a positive light, to build that mentorship and those positive relationships. So, that'll start the summer.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief, that's so important to build those positive proactive relationships with the community, with our kids, and so we really appreciate all that you have done, and thank you for your in-depth and thorough report, we greatly appreciate it. Does anybody have? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Give it up for our chief. We're gonna have our chief, Fire Chief, BSO Fire Chief to come up. We do want to have respect for our chief and our personnel here, so if we could, if anybody wants to have side conversations, if you want to take that out, then that is fine, but we really need to have respect for our law enforcement, BSO Fire Department Chief Sergio Pelissero, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, city staff, and the great citizens of Dania Beach. So, speaking of mental health, I just want to let you know, like, we have something that's called peer counseling, so we go on a bad call, and our firefighters need to, you know, talk about it, we have peer counselors are bringing in, so we're always on top of taking care of our firefighters under any mental health crisis. CAS Commission on Accreditation of Ambulance Services. They will be visiting us here in Dania Beach on June 2nd and 3rd, and what this does is ensures that we maintain the highest standards in the industry as far as our ambulance services go. We, they look at what we do, and they make recommendations, and they assess how we're performing our job, and I could tell you, we're doing a very good job. Our inspectors are over 53% in the completion rate for their annual inspections, they perform 295 total inspections in the month of April. And Safety Saturdays, I want to thank you, Mayor, and City Manager Hannah Garcia, for just mentoring me, helping me out, and, you know, give me some ideas. We created something that's called Safety Saturdays, and I'm very proud to say that. Starting May 31st and June 7th, we're gonna do, on May 31st, we're gonna do opioid class that's gonna be open to the public. I want to thank our team for helping us get this advertised, and Annette and Suzette for getting this advertised, and then on June 7th, we're gonna do a hands-only CPR class, which will teach CPR and some safety first aid tips to our citizens. So, please go on the city's website and sign up, I've already sent it out to all the HOAs and all our community groups to get them to sign up, so I'm very proud to talk about that. And at this time, there's something else I want to do, which I haven't done often, but I'd like to introduce one of our lieutenants, Lieutenant Marcus Alphonse, he's our coordinator of our cadet program, and I'd like to let him tell you a little bit about his cadet program and how it works here in Dania Beach.
Thank you, come on up, cadet.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Lieutenant Marcus Alphonse, and I am proudly serving the Broad Sheriff's Office Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services. I've been a lieutenant for approximately two years now, and I've been with the department for 10 years, but I've been a cadet for five years. So, I started this as, as young as 16 years old when I first got in. I am now the cadet coordinator of the program, so it's just something that I would, sorry, it's something that I'm very passionate about, and being in a lead position as me starting, just being a member, is very rewarding, and I just wanted to bring you guys' attention and awareness of that as well. So, currently, we have about approximately 74 cadets in the Broward County area, and what the cadets actually do here is go to special events with the cities or neighboring cities, and also ride times, which they can ride for eight to 12 hours with the fire rescue personnel, which is pretty amazing, as well as getting Commissioner, oh, sorry, community service hours, and also just developing and getting scholarships and stuff like that with the program itself. Now, I wanted to bring your attention as well and awareness that we only have about two citizens that's in our, in the BSO cadet program right now, so I just wanted to let you guys know, I know we're about investing into our kids and making it awareness, so we can start maybe getting it out there for this city to get more of the cadets involved, because it's a life-changing, promise you, a life-changing experience, so. And that's all, that's all I want to let you guys know, and I appreciate you for keeping me up here and giving you that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our report, so if you have any questions, I just wanted to let you know that we're on top of it. I know the city of Dania Beach is big into our kids, so I want to make sure we stay on top of that.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, we're very excited about this program, we're very excited about our Safety Saturdays coming up and involving our community in all things safety, and thank you for your contribution and making that happen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes. City Manager.
Yes, I wanted to take the time to thank Mayor Davis and Commissioner Llewellyn, and all the departments that participated in the Take Your Kid to Work. We had 42 kids represented, every single department, and it was truly remarkable, police, fire, finance, everyone, and I just, I had forgotten, because I want to move along very quickly, my manager, but thank you for your support, but it was a truly wonderful day.
No, it was. I had that in my comments too, so it is worth saying, the kids faces for Take Your Child to Work Day was the most phenomenal, so thank you for bringing that back up, City Manager. We do have next citizens' comments, but if your comments are related to one of the items, I believe, item 12.1, the retirement system and firefighter pension, then you will need to wait until that time until you have your comments, but if you have any other citizens' comments, I believe we have the Dana Beach Historical Society, is that related to a specific item, then you will need to wait for that item to come up. Other than that, if we have any general citizens' comments at this time, I don't see none, then we will move on with the agenda. Thank you. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, item eight. Is there, are there any items that the commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. Next, we have item nine, bids and requests for proposals. Item 9.1, Eve, if you would please read item 9.1.
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach approving the ranking of qualified management firms and authorizing the city administration to execute an agreement with Performance Pub, Inc., for operational management of Tiger Tail Link Dog Driving Dog, Doc, I'm sorry, this is hard, Dog Park for an initial term of 10 years with the option of two, three-year approvals that can be authorized by the city manager, provided for conflicts further and effective date. This is parks and recreation.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, we ask for your support. We discussed this item with each and every one of you. It's a win-win. They provide the project and the management, we provide the maintenance, and it's just going to be, continue to be a really terrific program, and we ask for your support.
Thank you, City Manager. Do I have a motion to approve item nine? One, Vice Mayor?
Make a motion to pass 9.1.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, item 9.1 passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. Item 9.2, if you could please read item 9.2, Eve.
It's a resolution of the City Commission authorizing the ITB 24-32 Southwest 34th Carrot Drainage Project to Basil USA LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,297,716.72, provided for conflicts and effective date, Public Services.
Thank you. Sean Shuttin, Deputy Director, Public Services. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney and City Manager. This is, of course, for the 34th Street Terrace Project in the amount of $1.3 million. It's a very vulnerable areas identified within our stormwater master plan, so this is a very important project for our community. It's about 1,600 linear feet of drainage pipe replacement, 20 new structures, and swale regrading.
Thank you, Sean.
This is one of our Tallahassee also-funded projects, so I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, do you have any discussion from the Commission? No discussion. Vice Mayor?
Make a motion to pass 9.2.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Second from Commissioner Ramoli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commission passes unanimously, item 9.3. Thank you. Next, we have item 9.3. 9.3, that was 9.2. 9.3, item 9.3. Eve, if you could please read item 9.3.
Yes, ma'am. A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the ITB 2024-9 Police Substation Generator to Zabat Engineering Services, Inc., in the amount of $178,638.08, provided for conflicts and an effective date. This is Public Services as well.
Public Services, do we have a?
Yes, Mayor, Commission, this is part of the Hazard Mitigation Grant. This is for the Police Substation Generator, and if you need more information from Public Services, they're here, but this is funded via grant, and we're very excited to move forward with this project.
Thank you, City Manager. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
Yes. Yeah, like the manager said, I just wanted to make this known, this is a fully funded federal project, so totally being funded by the feds. So with that, make a motion to approve item 9.3.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Do I have a second? Second. Second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 9.3 passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. Moving on to item 9.4, Eve, if you could please read item 9.4.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing ITB 25-6 Griffin Road East Landscaping Improvements to Visualscape, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $336,561.25, which includes a 5% contingency, providing for conflicts and effective date, Public Services.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you know, we have completed the western corridor from State Row 7 to I-95. Now we're moving forward from I-95 all the way to Federal, as we continue on one of your top priorities, which is the beautification of the city of Dana Beach, and we ask for your support.
Absolutely. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, Mayor, we pass 9.4.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ramoli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item 9.4 passes unanimously. We love making our city beautiful, so thank you for that one, and let's move right along to item 9.5. Eve, if you would please read item 9.5.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the ITB 25-10 Pier Elevator Capsule Replacement, it's a reissue, to Elevated Facility Services in an amount not to exceed $42,600, providing for conflicts and effective date, and again, this is a Public Services item.
Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor Commissioners, we ask for your support, and also want to take this opportunity to thank our city engineer, our Deputy Director of Public Services, and our Director of Public Services. This is the elevator project by the Quarter Deck at Ocean Park. It's been a true challenge, but we're there, and we ask for your support to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. As our Public Services Director says, this is very happy news, so do we have a motion for that? Vice Mayor?
Make a motion to pass 9.5 graciously.
Do I have a second?
And I will thankfully second it.
We are gratefully, thankfully, do we all have, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much, item 9.5, new elevator at Quarter Deck passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next, we have item 10, quasi-judicial and public hearing items. We have none, so we're moving on to item 11.1. Eve, if you would please read item 11.1.
An ordinance of the City Commission amending Chapter 8 of the Land Development Code at Part 3, Special Zoning District, Subpart 1, Community Redevelopment Agency Form-Based Zoning Districts, by amending Section 30360, the EDBBMU East Dana Beach Boulevard Mixed Use District, at Paragraph O, deleting the existing maximum height and substituting a revised maximum height, allowing seven stories at the property located at 225-255 East Dana Beach Boulevard, provided for codification, conflict severity, and an effective date. This is a community development item. Thank you, Eve.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Eleanor Narina, Community Development Director. So this is a request, as the city attorney stated, to amend the East Dana Beach Boulevard Mixed Use Zoning District by revising the map. So the applicant is Braha Dana LLC, and the location is 225 East Dana Beach Boulevard. And so I just want to remind the Commission that last year in March, the City Commission approved the elimination of incentives, overall reducing the allowable height and density within the Regional Activity Center. So this request is to allow that property specifically to develop up to seven stories and 35 dwelling units per acre. It's important to note that the request is not to increase the maximum height allowed in the zoning district, it's only to change where the maximum allowable height can be located within the district. This item was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board in April, and it was unanimously approved. Staff is also recommending approval of the item. The applicant is here to give a brief detailed presentation, and I'll be available for any questions after the presentation, if you have any of me.
Thank you, Eleanor. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk. My name is Edwin J. Stacker, and I'm an attorney with Shudson Bowen LLP. Our address is 201 East Los Olas Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Suite 2200. Also with me this evening is, although there is no site plan or project before you, Hector Hoxman from Urbanica, Inc., is the architect who's been working on this project. You may recall, 14 months ago, probably, we were, before you came in, you all were considering the adoption of 2024-21, the form-based ordinance, and we talked to you about this, and we have waited patiently as the density was applied to the RAC, and we have now an actual site plan that is going through the process. Just a quick reminder as to what is occurring this evening, as was stated, we're simply asking, it's a vanilla map amendment, if you will, to the existing EDBBMU district, and it enables us to go our site, which is very, you can see right there, highlighted, that's just under four acres of property, with frontage of almost 600 feet on the, along East Dana Beach Boulevard. This is a closer picture of the property. What you can see is there today is about 65,000 square feet of office space, Citibank is there, and Cruzcom, and really a sea of asphalt parking around it. It's a tired site, and we're excited to have been able to participate and to be participating. There are some other views of the property. This is the district itself, the zoning district, if you can see it, and just to remind you, the entitlements last year would have enabled up to 14 stories of certain properties in the district with incentives, and an increase in density up to 75. Now, the maximum height is the seven stories and 35 units, and we're not asking for any density or anything other than the ability to put the, to have flexibility to develop the parcel consistent with your CRA objectives and your long-range plan for the city along that corridor. There's the map, which shows the change, and this is just a quick illustration of what we're able to do in the future with a buffer of townhome apartments on the north side at a maximum of 25 feet, but it will enable us to go up seven stories and create a wonderful arcade concept along the pedestrian walkway of East Dana Beach Boulevard. In conclusion, we think that this request is much needed for this property. The property owner has owned it for almost 20 years, and they've had people nibbling at it, but this gives us the flexibility now to come in with, we think, a project that is a win-win for the city and the property owner. We'll be happy to answer any questions, but we would ask that you move this ordinance for approval on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stacker. Do we have any discussion from the Commission on this item? Or do I have a motion? Oh, sorry, this is a public hearing. Do I have anyone to speak for or against this item? Seeing none? All right. Public hearing is now closed, and we have comment from Vice Mayor or motion.
Okay, no, I have a question. I just noticed on that one screen you had up there, that from the, what was there and what's proposed, it looked like the incentives were gone, that we weren't getting any incentives for, did I read that wrong?
No.
No, you're correct. The incentives that previously existed enabled certain properties to go up to 14 stories.
Right.
And to increase density up to 75 units. Today, the maximum height is seven stories with a maximum density of 35 units to the acre. So it's been, there's been a significant reduction, if you will.
Okay, okay, that's all I know. I'll make a motion, we pass item 11.1.
I have a motion to pass item 11.1 from Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I just have one question.
Sure.
If I remember correctly, it's a hotel proposal, but also condos? Explain again what the proposal was.
Well, when the site plan gets to you all, the, there are 18 units on the north side, 25 feet, and then there is a hotel and a proposed condo hotel use, and that is, and there's also on the ground floor, the Citibank will be relocated to the middle ultimately, it can be built in phases, and there'll be restaurant and other commercial use along the ground floor.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. So if there's no other comments, I'll make a second.
Any other comments? I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, I have a second from Commissioner Ramoli. Do you want to call it to a vote? City Clerk?
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramoli?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Just, if I could, Mayor?
Sure.
I just wanted to, I've gotten two questions on it, so I just wanted to explain, these are ordinances that change our code, so therefore they're legislative, they're not quasi-judicial in nature, which is why I haven't asked for disclosures.
Thank you, Eve, for that clarification. All right, next, we have item 11, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, before you go on with this item, I just have to recuse myself, because I have a direct conflict with this item, so I'm just going to leave the room during this item, so take your time.
Okay.
Nice.
Technically, you can stay if you'd like to.
Okay.
Would you like me to read the item?
Let's just wait till Commissioner, no, go ahead, you can go ahead and read the item. You can go ahead and read the item. No, no, I was kidding. No, go ahead.
I followed direction really well.
I've been getting them both here lately.
An ordinance of the city commission amending Chapter twenty-eight Land Development Code at Part Three Special Zoning District, Subpart One CRA Form-Based Zoning District, to create the Beach Gateway Mixed-Use Two District at Section three oh three seventy-five, entitled The Gateway Beach, The Beach Gateway Mixed-Use Two District. Also to provide for the following revisions, amending Article three hundred how to use, Section three hundred dash seventy commonly used abbreviations, Article three oh two detailed use regulations, Section thirty three oh two ten permitted special exception and prohibited uses, Section three oh two forty mixes of uses, Article three oh four building height and transition regulations, Section three oh four ten, entitled generally amending Article three oh seven landscaping regulations at Section three oh seven ten onsite landscaping requirements, Part One Use Regulations, Article one hundred general use regulations applying to all zoning districts at Section one hundred dash sixty, Establishment of Zoning Districts, amending Article one oh five entitled Use Regulations for Residential and Open Space Districts at Section one oh five one seventy, Community Residential Homes and Residential Care Facilities, Amending Article one ten Use Regulations for Commercial and Mixed-Use Districts at one ten twenty, List of permitted special exception and prohibited uses, amending Part Two Site Development Regulations, Article two hundred entitled User Guide for Part Two of the Code at Section two hundred dash forty, How Part Two of the Code Relates to the CRA Form-Based and PMUD Regulations, Amending Article two sixty-five Off-Street Parking Requirements at Section two sixty-five ninety-one, Parking Reduction for Transportation Demand Management Strategy Implementation Within the CRA Form-Based Districts, amending two seventy-five Landscaping Requirements, Section two seventy-five one seventy Landscape Requirements for Screening, Amending Part Five Signage and Design Regulations, Article five oh five Sign Regulations at Section oh five oh five twenty, Definitions, amending five oh five ninety Sign Regulations for Mixed-Use CRA Form-Based Zoning Districts, Section five oh five two ten Community Redevelopment Agency Design Incentives, and amending Part Seven, entitled Code Administration, Article seven hundred, Entitled Code Administration and Legal Provisions, Section seven twenty-five thirty Terms Defined, Providing for Codification, Conflicts of Verability, and an Effective Date. This is the community development item.
I feel like giving you a hand after that.
Yes, she deserves a round of applause for that. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening again.
Good evening, Eleanor.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So this is another tax amendment. This is a little unique, though. It's to create a new zoning district called the Gateway Mixed-Use Two. The applicant is Greenspoon Marner, representing Ryan Ventures LTD, the property located at seven hundred East Dana Beach Boulevard. So again, I'm going to remind you that in March of last year, the city commission approved the elimination of incentives, reducing the overall height and density within the Regional Activity Center. So this request would allow this property to develop up to eight stories and eighty-five dwelling units per acre, where the code currently only allows seven stories and fifty dwelling units per acre. So there was some public benefit that was negotiated to allow this additional story. And the applicant will go into details of that, but I'll just briefly say it was for payment for public parking. It's payment for public parks, it's sustainable building practices, and enhanced stormwater capacity on their site. So the Planning and Zoning Board did hear this item and recommended denial of this request, three to one. Staff is still recommending approval of this item because of the public benefit, and it's consistent with development patterns that are currently in place in this area. It's on the lower end of the scale of development of the current projects that are already built today. So with that, I will introduce the applicant, and he'll give a brief detailed presentation. And I'll be here for any questions of the board, if you have any, after the presentation.
Thank you, Eleanor.
You're welcome. Mr. Mealy, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Dennis Mealy, two hundred East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you very much for the opportunity. There we go. So this is the current Gateway MU zoning district. And the reason I'm showing this map is that the only properties that would be eligible to rezone to Gateway Two are the properties that are already in the Gateway Mixed-Use District, which is shown in blue on your map. And so you notice the district starts on the south side of Dana Beach Boulevard at Fifth Avenue and goes over to the east side of seventy seven sixty-eight East Dana Beach Boulevard. And then on the north side, it starts, I guess halfway between Fifth Avenue and Gulfstream and goes over to nine oh one East Dana Beach Boulevard on this east end. So this is just an aerial photo showing you this area. The reason that we've labeled both the Dana Beach and the Hollywood portions of the property out here is you're going to see that a lot of the property in this area is protected wetlands, protected mangroves, and cannot be built on at all. This is the city, a composite of the City of Hollywood and City of Dana Beach land use maps. So you can see that all of those areas that are in that dark green or that light green are conservation. They have to remain in their current condition. Even when you look on the south side of Dana Beach Boulevard, east of the Gateway District, you see those little parcels that are C-two zoned and RAC land use. But those are also protected wetlands, protected mangroves. You can't build on those either. And as we zero in on this a little bit more, you'll see even some of the property that is in the RAC and in this zoning district. For example, on the north side of Dana Beach Boulevard, you see an area that can be developed. It's about four acres. And then north of it, those are areas that are protected wetlands as well. The reason I'm pointing this out is to make sure that we're zeroing in on there's only a few properties that could even make use of this district. So I'll try to show that in more detail. So then these are the zoning districts. You see the Gateway Mixed-Use. You see the other zoning districts that are part of the RAC. And then you see the traditional zoning districts around there with the RM and the RM Two. So this again shows the change that was made in March of last year. Initially, in this area, there was a base density of fifty units an acre, a base building height of seven stories. And with the incentives, you could go to one hundred units per acre and go to fourteen stories. So the two thousand and ten version you see in the middle, the two thousand and twenty-four version on the right, which is the current code, the fifty units per acre and the seven stories with no incentives. So in the new district that we're creating, let me first take a step back. We had appeared last year when you were adopting the ordinance that was changing this code section. And we talked about some concerns we had, and the answer we had was that you want to go ahead and adopt it. If somebody wanted to bring in something on a case-by-case basis, you would look at it at the time. So that's what we did. And there's not really an ability to just change this one property because you can't do a variance, for example, for density. So the only way to really address this was to come back and say, let's try to create a new district. Let's define that district very tightly, so there's only certain properties that can be eligible to apply for it. And that's why we said you cannot apply for Gateway Two unless you're already in what I'll call Gateway One. So as Eleanor had described, we are asking for the ability to go to eighty-five units per acre. We're asking the ability to add one story. And what we've done is basically taken all of the incentives that were in before that were removed and made them requirements if you go to Gateway Two. And I'll kind of go through what those are. We also have shown additional requirements in Gateway Two that are not required anywhere else. And I'll show those shortly. So for example, I know that you have sustainable building practices in your code generally. We're kind of going beyond what is required generally and doing more in terms of those sustainable practices. Also putting back in the provision to pay for off-street parking if you don't have enough on your site. Although I will tell you, for my client's proposal, we are going to have all of the required parking on the property. So we're putting this provision back in because it was in the code before, but we don't intend to use it. We intend to have all of the required parking on our property. And then the contribution for public parks was something that you did when you were using an incentive under the old code. It's not in the new code anymore for Gateway. If you go to Gateway Two, you will have to make that contribution for public parks again. And the way that we've done this after meeting with staff is we haven't made it incentives to go from seven to eight. No matter how many stories you build, and we haven't made it incentives to go from fifty to eighty-five. No matter how many units per acre you build, you must comply with all the requirements in the Gateway Two. So if you come into Gateway Two and you do forty units per acre, you still have to do all of the things that are in the in the code, in the new ordinance. So the first thing we talk about is stormwater retention. And you may remember when you were doing the land use amendment for the four thousand new units in the RAC, the item that took the longest with the county was coming to an agreement on how you would handle water management in this area going forward. So there are some general provisions in the land use plan for the four thousand units in the RAC, but not specific engineering drainage requirements. So what we did is we looked at that language, we talked to your staff, and then we also reached out to the county staff, who actually handles the drainage permitting. And we came up with this series of drainage improvements that will be required for anyone who rezones to Gateway Two. Now, I asked the staff, I said, what about people that are using some of the other four thousand units that aren't in Gateway Two? And the answer was that the city can request them to make these improvements, but can't require them to do so. In our case, in Gateway Two, you will be required to do this greater drainage, greater water management system on the property. I don't know if you're familiar with Dr. Jennifer Horado, who works for Broward County, but she's the one that we consulted with at the county side of things to make sure we were doing the state-of-the-art, best drainage system that you can do. And so all of those things are incorporated here. I know this is a lot of engineering language. I won't try to go through it, but I can tell you that we've been able to confirm that this will be the highest level of water management and drainage in the city if we do everything that's shown here, which we would be required to do if we rezone to Gateway Two. The next thing we looked at is how does what we're proposing in this ordinance, in this new district, compare to what you might be required to do in the existing code? So on the right is the existing code, on the left is what is in the district. So just sometimes it's easier when there's numbers to put to these things. So I'll give you an example. So if you look at the existing code in the upper right box, you would have to come up with a plan that gives you ten points on the sustainable building roster, so to speak. And if you look in the left, what we're agreeing is we will be certified, either LEED or Green Globes or one of the other things, or the city also has a certification program. So just to give you an idea of the numbers, in the existing code, you have to do five things. And you can see, even to go with the lowest level of LEED, you need to do between forty and forty-nine things. So we're going way beyond the general code provision because we know that we're here asking you to create this new district. And so the public benefits part are important. I think Eleanor went over some of those, and this is another example of how we would go beyond what the regular code provides for sustainable building practices. On the lower left is the what was already mentioned, the required payment for off-street parking. Again, I would ask you to look at the bottom line of the lower left. For our site, we are going to have all our required parking on the property. So even though the code would have a provision where you can pay, which is what you used to have in your code, we won't be taking advantage of that particular provision. We're going to have all of our required parking. And then again, contribution for public parks. You see what we've put back in the code for this zoning district. And you see the fifty cents a square foot number, which is the number that you had in there before when you did have it in the code. And then, as I mentioned, the enhanced stormwater standards I showed on the previous slide will be required for anyone in Gateway Two. And the rest of the four thousand unit allocation is something you can ask for, but not something you can require. I think we're going back to it. Just give me one minute, and we'll get right back to it. That's the worst shot, the back of my head, where all of my hair is falling. That's why I grew the beard. I'm losing it up here. I thought I'd add some over here. Okay, we'll get back to the spot. Thank you. Okay, so there are fifteen properties that are in the Gateway District. But actually, there are eleven property owners because there's certain property owners that own more than one tax ID parcel. So just kind of starting over on the upper right. So you see thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are all owned by the same person. And I think I'd mentioned earlier, thirteen is a parcel that can be developed. But fourteen and fifteen are protected wetlands with conservation easement. One and two and three and four, I believe three and four are owned by the county. I can't remember the owner for one and two. And then what I'm going to do now is show the properties that are either already developed or already approved or already under construction to kind of look at what's left of the of the eleven different property owners. So on this slide, you see the developments that have already been completed in green, the developments that are approved but not yet built in yellow, and the developments that are approved and under construction in, I guess that's pink. So you kind of look at what's left. So if we start by looking at what's left, if we start over on the lower left, we know we have the corner of Fifth Avenue and Dana Beach Boulevard. We have, and I believe at one point there was a commercial project proposed for that, but I think it may have expired. And then you have the parcels south of that. Those are the two parcels owned by Broward County. I don't think Broward County is going to be proposing to build residential development. And then you have seven hundred East Dana Beach Boulevard, which are my clients. And then you have seven sixty-eight East Dana Beach Boulevard. That's the fireworks place. And it's my understanding that the fireworks place lease has many, many years to go, and so they'll probably be there a lot longer with their current building. And then on the north side, you have eight twenty-five, which is the motel, and then nine oh one. And as I mentioned, there's four acres of nine oh one, the southernmost four acres that can be developed. The northern parts are all wetlands. And so the table on the lower left shows you those existing developments. So you see that Seaview One, which is item number one on the list, is completed. It's thirteen stories, it's eighty-five units an acre. Seaview Two, which is on the south side, is fourteen stories and a hundred units an acre. Park View, which is number three, that was approved about two years ago, and it hasn't started construction yet, but it should be starting very soon. That's also fourteen stories, seventy-five units an acre. Elevate, which is right next to us, is eight stories, seventy-one units an acre. And then finally, Veridian, which is right next to that, not yet built but approved, fourteen stories and ninety-eight units an acre. So we also wanted to put our property in context with what's going on around us. So you see where we're at, at seven hundred East Dana Beach Boulevard. And then just looking around us, you see fourteen-story buildings, thirteen-story buildings, and an eight-story building next to us. And then east of us and south of us, the reason I was showing the land use maps earlier, all of that area is preserved, nothing will be built there. So we're kind of at the end of the development area on the south side of Dana Beach Boulevard because it's us, the seven sixty-eight, and then everything east and south of that is protected wetlands. So I think Eleanor had mentioned earlier, one of the reasons for the staff recommendation of approval, one of the reasons, is that we're consistent with what's around us, what we're requesting. In fact, at the lower end, because we have thirteen stories, fourteen stories, and eight, and we're asking for eight. So one of the other reasons why is there a request to go from seven to eight? So when we look at other codes that we have to build to, there is a breakpoint when you go from eight stories to nine, not when you go from seven stories to eight. So for example, the Broward County Code, mid-rise is between four and eight stories. High-rise is when you go nine stories. high-rise is when you go nine stories or higher. The same thing in the Florida Building Code, uh, when you're, uh, eight stories or less, uh, you're mid-rise when you go above that eight stories. So it, it's a very, it's a more complicated definition, but the bottom line is, that's when you're at nine stories, you're high-rise. So, uh, we had a similar situation in Pompano Beach a couple of years ago where we said, you know, please draw that line between eight stories and nine as the separation because that's the way the other codes already do it. So, uh, we also did a plan because when we went to staff and we said we would like to go with eight stories, that part they understood, the distinction between mid-rise and high-rise, but then they said, well, how did you come up with eighty-five units an acre? So we said, well, we actually did a site plan where we looked at all of the code requirements, parking setbacks, open space requirements and everything else, and, and even looked at the minimum, uh, floor area of each unit, whether it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom, et cetera. And eighty-five units will fit nicely within an eight-story building and meeting all of the other code requirements. So this is a, uh, rendering, uh, that we had done. Um, and then, uh, we have, we also did a site plan, this is showing you the ground floor, on the right is the site data table, and I can go into that in more detail if you'd like, I know it's too hard to read on such a small thing. Uh, but it shows that we meet all of the code requirements, uh, with this building. And then this is a, uh, a little, um, rendering vignette, the different colors equate to whether it's a studio unit, a one-bedroom unit, a two-bedroom unit, or a three-bedroom unit, that's all those colors are referring to. And then same thing here, uh, just showing the, uh, various, um, levels of the building. So, um, simply our request is to, uh, adopt this new zoning district so that property owners that are in that, those eleven property owners, well, it's a lot less than eleven because a lot of them have already been built or already approved for higher density and higher number of stories, so they wouldn't want to rezone. But for those few properties left, uh, we would be eligible to file an application to rezone, which would still have to come back here, and then we would also have to file an application for a site plan, which would also, uh, come back to you. Um, so it doesn't guarantee that anyone can do it, it just makes the district available, uh, and it doesn't guarantee that anyone's going to get any particular density because they still have to come in and produce a site plan that meets the code. Um, so that's what our request is, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and I understand this is a public hearing as well, if there's a public comment like the opportunity to respond is appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Millie. This is a public hearing, do we have anyone who would like to speak for or against this item?
I would just like, uh, the developer to clarify that he will be providing all four public benefits we discussed, it sounded like he would not be providing the public parking. Um, the intent and the understanding of staff was that they would be paying for public parking. Um, in the previous code, it was a minimum of ten public parking spaces, the value of those spaces, so we were, um, anticipating, um, a monetary, um, donation for that. Can you clarify, please?
If you want it, we'll make it.
Thank you, Eleanor. Um, anyone else want to have, want to speak for or against this item from the public? Seeing none. Uh, Vice Mayor, I see that you have...
Thank you, Mayor. You know, looking over, uh, you know, I've, I've always been supportive of all the, you know, height that hadn't really bothered me a lot. You know, that's Danny Beach Boulevard is a district where we've already got two fourteen-story buildings going up there, so, you know, it, I don't think it'd be out of place, plus the wetlands are behind it and so on, but the question, some of the questions I have is that, you know, you're taking a fourteen-story building and cut it in half and went from a hundred units, now you're asking for eighty-five and you're taking seven, six floor, six floors away. That means those units are going to be sm- way smaller, and I don't, I, it either went through the screen too fast or it's not big enough, and I don't know what size these, these rooms are, but, you know, I don't think, uh, I, I don't know, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying that, uh, you know, I'd like to know what size these rooms are and, you know, is it something that, that's what we're, that we're looking for in Danny Beach, because why is trying to squeeze in eighty-five units per acre? Um, it, it, I don't know, it just seems a little bit, uh, extensive going, not, I mean, if you just said like sixty-five or something like that, you know, I'd have been more approachable, but you're talking about almost the same amount of mu- uh, same amount of units with six floors left, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, you know, the height of the building doesn't bother me, I think that because of the other buildings around that I don't have an issue with it. Um, you know, I, I don't know what the rents would be on something when you start cutting the rooms down, I saw you had three different sized rooms there, but if you're going eighty-five units in that, if you, if you end up getting approved eighty-five units in that amount of space, these two-bedroom apartments can't be more than nine hundred square feet. I, I think, I ca- I don't have a calculator, but I'm just writing them down, and I may be wrong. You know, I noticed that on your site, and I don't know how to look back at it, but number seven hundred is what you own, or the property you're talking about, and that, next door is seven sixty-eight, the comment was made that, uh, they're under a long-term lease. What goes in my mind, uh, if we change the ordinance on that, is even though they're on a long-term lease, if they become, uh, a partner in the property, if they wanted to drop the lease and become a partner with the developer, that all could be developed, and they're nega- they're going to want the same thing again there as well. Once we establish this code, um, it's going to be open market for that property if they want to go into, um, you know, developing with the property owner that might want to buy the lease out or possibly partner up with it. It's, you know, the, the, you're still at the mid-rise, I have no problem with that. Um, I think my biggest, um, issue is, is how many units per acre, I mean, then, then the item came up with Eleanor just now, and then the item just came up with Eleanor just now about, you know, there were supposed to be four items proposed and, and now they're not, and why wasn't it there, then all of a sudden you want to give it back. I don't get why it wasn't there to begin with, and that to me is a manipulation, and I don't like stuff like that, because if it was brought up in the planning and zoning and it was there at that time and now it's not here tonight, why did it get removed? I mean, what, what was the purpose of that?
So we, we had intended to address, uh, off-street parking, and Eleanor was talking about the public parking payment, so we were addressing off-street parking, saying you could pay for that if you don't do it, but we're going to do it on-site, so we didn't intend to pay for it because we intended to do it. What Eleanor is talking about is paying for not having public parking on your property, which we had not been intending to address, but if that's what the city wants us to do, it's a payment, and we'll make it. And, and the language can be in the ordinance, we weren't trying to do anything unusual, we were talking about two separate things.
I probably have more, but I'm sure that the other commissioners are, are loaded up, so, um, you know, just to, uh, summarize my situation, you know, listening to the conversations I did, calls from three, three people on it, I'm not trying, uh, listen, I, I think, you know, I'm okay with a project in, in general, I don't know, the only thing I have an issue with is the, at this point is the units per acre, I just think you're squeezing in a lot, I mean, when you take, I mean, just think about it, you had a hundred units for four, fourteen floors, and now you want eighty-five for eight floors, it just, that's like what, a forty percent increase on the, on the amount of units in that amount of area, it just seems like a lot, squeezing down a lot of size of the building, that's a lot of size of apartments, but that's, that's my only rule, uh, at this point, as at this, it's my only real negative on this.
Understood.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Ramoni.
Uh, yeah, Dennis, I actually had the same question, uh, that Vice Mayor did have about the size of the units, um, because of the reduction in the dense, or the, the height, and I was also a little confused about eighty-five per unit, it's, seems to be very high number for such a small project. Uh, do you know, do you have a, a size of the each units at this time, or?
Yeah, we, all, all we did was design the minimum floor areas to be the minimum in the code.
So it's one bedroom?
The two-bedroom, the three-bedroom. But, but, and then also let me say that, um, when you look at these, all of these districts, the numbers don't always seem to be intuitive. For example, you had a district that you were just talking about earlier, where it was seven stories but thirty-five units an acre. If you're only going to build thirty-five units an acre, you don't need seven stories. So the numbers didn't always match. You had certain districts where it was four, seven and fourteen, and it was fifty and one hundred. You had other districts that were seven and fourteen, but you could go to one hundred and fifty. So the, the density numbers and the stories numbers didn't always match. But let me say this, um, I just checked with my client because I heard the concern, and if you would make, instead of the eighty-five, seventy-five, we know we can make it work just fine, the units will meet the code, the proper sizes, uh, will have the required parking, uh, and I assure you that the seventy-five will work just fine because I know that the eighty-five works, but if there's a concern, we want to try to address it.
And that's where I was going to ask you, is if you would be considered, would consider going to seventy-five, but can you pull up, um, page number twelve for me one more time?
Sure.
Just, I have a, I just want to get my bearings and make sure that I'm seeing the right thing here.
Um, oh, also I wanted to mention, um, Rob Book is here with me, he represents the, uh, fireworks company, and, uh, he was just saying to me, they're not going to leave because there's nowhere else for them to go. You know, uh, ordinances dealing with fireworks are very difficult, so if you have a spot, you kind of have to stay there.
So as he's pulling up page twelve, I believe it showed a map of, um, the properties that will be affected by this particular change would be seven hundred, seven sixty-eight, eight twenty-five, and nine oh one?
Yeah, and potentially, uh, the property owned by Broward County, which again, I don't think they're using.
But what, that's probably not going to happen.
Right.
Uh, five hundred is already under the fourteen?
No, I believe five hundred was originally approved for commercial, but then I think the site plan expired.
That's not correct, is that, Eleanor? Is, that's already, I think, approved for fourteen, if I'm not mistaken?
I'll, I'll stand corrected, please.
I just want to clarify that.
Yes, Commissioner, you are correct.
Okay.
That has been approved, the site plan has been approved and the height was fourteen stories.
So if they move forward, it would, it could go to fourteen with incentives then?
Yes, it's already been approved.
Okay, oh, it has been approved, okay. Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, it hasn't come before commission yet, it's gone through DRC, it hasn't been to you guys yet.
All right, because I knew that...
They've locked in the units from the old incentives, but we're still going through review and getting presented to the commission, sorry for clarification.
Good, that, that's what I thought, and, and I, of course, I wasn't on the commission at that time, but I do remember being here when that came before, so we're only looking at three properties at this point that we're looking at this change.
And we'll adjust our map, I wasn't, I wasn't aware.
It's not that they, they have the possibility of the change.
Correct, yeah.
Not that there is an actual change right tonight.
I understand, I understand, I just, in my mind, I wanted to make sure that was correct. Again, I, I...
We'll adjust our map now that I know about that.
Yeah, okay, perfect, but I, again, with, like, the Vice Mayor was saying, I, I like the idea of reducing it to seventy-five, if that seems to work, so that's all I have.
All right, Commissioner DeWelling?
Yes, thank you. Um, and, and it's, as our Vice Mayor was speaking, I was thinking I had the same questions. Um, I also, I don't have an issue with the, with going to eight stories, what I have the issue with is the density. Um, it's, I, it, I feel like it's significantly too much, especially, and I, and I understand that, that you're saying it's a minimum and all of that, but, you know, we have residents in the city who really, they were very happy with the fact that we had the zoning changes, that we reduced the, the density, we reduced the height, um, and to turn around and undo that is, um, something I'm not really comfortable with doing. Um, I would, i- if, if you can reduce the density, I think that's something that we could potentially work with, but I'm not, the eighty-five is just much too high for me. Um, and, and the other, the other incentives, which are not incentives, they're benefits, I, I was talking with, um, Eve and, and the manager about this earlier today, um, it's not incentives, correct?
Correct.
Right.
That is correct.
Okay, and it, 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 by doing this, by allowing this new zoning district, it doesn't necessarily mean that a, another project will come in and automatically get approved. Correct?
Correct.
All right.
And actually, none of them will automatically be approved. Because we, you would have to come in for a map, uh, or, uh, map amendment and ordinance for that, so it would be two readings of that, and then they would have to come in for a site plan.
And, and we could always say no to that.
Especially to the ordinance on the map amendment, because that is legislative.
Right. Okay, so we could reasonably move this forward tonight to go to second reading, and they could make some adjustments to this based upon the concerns that we all have here. Is that fair? Am I correct? Yes, we would just ask for, uh, consensus on that, what that direction is, so we know what we're drafting.
And Commissioner, these are not incentives, the, these are benefits to the community, and I don't know if Mr. Millie put a number to the parks contribution, but I think it's important that you put that on the record because we are working on a seven-acre park in proximity to this project. Do you have a number tied to that contribution?
Yes, if we can, um, get the slide back up, I'll show it.
If we can.
I, I, I remember it was, said it was fifty cents a square foot, but let me make sure we have it right. I have a paper copy, let me...
Well, while we're waiting for that, we're, we're not, um, this isn't proposing any commercial space, I mean, you know...
No, we, we are not proposing any commercial space.
It's strictly residential.
That's correct. So the, uh, the park requirement is fifty cents per square foot of residential gross floor area, and then you also have a provision for a consumer price index, uh, increase each year for the cost of living. So fifty cents is this year, next year it might be fifty-two cents per square foot. And when we look at, at least the building that we've planned for the site, uh, we have a total of almost five hundred and fifty thousand square feet with the eight stories, so it's a pretty substantial, uh, payment.
Can somebody give us a, a, a number?
I said a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the parks, and it would be three hundred thousand dollars for the parking.
I should have just stepped aside and let her do it.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Something that I, I actually, I did speak with you about, Dennis, very shortly before this, is, and I do appreciate the benefits, believe me, I know we're going through some difficult, some very challenging times right now economically as far as, you know, where things stand, and I, I do appreciate that, but again, my concern is not, um, I, I don't like us going backwards when we started moving forwards in a particular direction. Um, the other, and the other thing is, is that we do, in the city now, we are commanding a much higher standard from our developers and from new projects that are coming in, and we have a couple of them right now that are going above and beyond on every project. So I, although I appreciate the benefits, it's not uncommon with the other projects that we're seeing, I mean, we have one right now that's actually redoing an entire, they're doing an entire, uh, engineering project on Gulfstream Road in order, as, at their own expense, um, to assist with the problems that are there, so, you know, I, I appreciate it, and I, and I'm glad that you're coming to us now with these additional benefits because I know initially that wasn't the case. Um, I, I, like I said, my biggest concern is the density, I, I think it's too much. But I don't necessarily want to kill the project, so, you know, so I just, I think, I think some changes need to be made, that's all.
Understood. Um, I'm hoping that you could go with the seventy-five units an acre, we will have to produce a site plan that meets the code, if we have variances, you don't have to approve them, um, and so if we don't reach seventy-five, meeting the code, then it'll be less than
All right, uh, I will weigh in on this, my colleagues have given some, um, valuable feedback, which I won't repeat, but, um, there has, as far as I've been seeing the conversation go, um, we had one understanding of the, of the public benefit, and then a different understanding, we had, um, you know, a proposal for eighty-five, now it's We also, um, I have done my due diligence on this project, I have met with and spoken with, uh, Dennis, I have spoken with the members of the Planning and Zoning Board, and I think it is very important because all of our planning and zoning members are our residents and they are appointed by this commission, and their voices absolutely one hundred percent matter. In doing so, um, I know when I was out there knocking on doors, a lot of the concern was the development, is there a big difference between seven stories and eight stories? No, but when you say you're going to do something and you're going to, um, reduce the height by fifty percent... 50%, and then less than a year later, you have a proposal to not keep your word, and that proposal is tied to an elected official's benefit or family's benefit, it starts to feel like it can set a precedent for something that is going to continue. And when I spoke to some of the residents, they, they believed that the rules should apply to everybody. If you have 50, if you say you're going to reduce it by 50%, then that's what it is. Keep your word and do what you said you were going to do. And so I do have an issue with, you know, presenting and having, going through over a two-year process with the county, with the state, figuring out how we could really show that we're listening to our residents, and showing that we are hearing and actually taking action to do what they said that they would like to see in the city as far as the vision forward. And so we have done a lot of work. Our community development team has done a lot of work. And I, it does mean a lot to me that the Planning and Zoning Board did deny this application. So I, I really grapple with this, because I, I can see that the eight stories is the standard for the mid-rise. And I wish that that was the original proposal, because that, you know, then that way we could, we could say that we're keeping our word. But at this point, I feel that there has been too many changes as far as the understanding of the public benefit, the changes of the, the density from, from 85 to 75, from 50 to 75, 85 to 50, 75. So it's just been a lot of, a lot of things that have not been straightforward as far as I'm concerned. And I'm just not comfortable with the way that it has been presented this evening. So with that, I will have the Vice Mayor speak.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, and I understand that completely, what you're saying. I think in most cases, I would stand by that a lot. And I just look at Dania Beach Boulevard, the two 14-story buildings that are across from it, and, you know, eight stories, nine stories, even 10 stories, I don't think would be out of place in that particular area, because you can't build behind it, there's no residents behind it. You know, do I want to change what we've worked so hard for? No, I really don't. I think there is certain areas of the, the city, exceptions can be made. And there's always exceptions made when we do, you look around the perimeters of what we're doing. You know, I got to, I don't, it wouldn't, you know, I mean, a lot of people don't like what I'm gonna say, but I mean, it wouldn't even bother me if it was 10 stories or 12 stories, because there's already one across the street. You know, the biggest problem with me is the density. You know, I just want to make sure that we're presenting to the, to the people that are out there that are going to come to our city, that I don't want to hear them saying, God, these apartments are small, or this isn't right, and there's too much money for this. I mean, that's one of my biggest issues with it, because I just want to make sure that we're giving a good product. And I, and speaking of what the city manager had said about, you know, the developer right down the street, you know, all the extra money they're spending for the project, I mean, putting up the drainage project for stopping the sea level rise on the mangroves right by the Seaview, that's another $1 million design out of their pocket, which wasn't even required. You know, and with the developers that we're looking to do that with, we're trying to find developers that are going to come in here and be partners with the city in areas like that, and what they want to give back. And when they ask for something, you know, that's, that's why I don't have too much of an issue of, you know, of passing something like this. But I just think that when you, I guess my issue is against the density. But, you know, you know, it's, it's something I don't think would be out of place, you know. I think it's, it's in the position we're at, and do I want to change it? But I think you're going to have this problem. I think if we, I think if we stick to our guns in areas that aren't developed like US-1, and, you know, stay in that, that we have six stories and four stories, and we stay in that area, and further out west, I mean, you know, you go down into Daniel Point, we, we made a whole new zoning code for that area over there when they came in here, and we, and we did that. So I think some exceptions can be made. I, I think that the project is within reason. I just, again, the density, I'd prefer it to be like 65 or 70 at the maximum, you know, because of just, it's just a huge increase of a density and, and, you know, dropping the floors. But, you know, I, I mean, I'm not opposed to the eight floors. I just, but I'm not going to, you know, whatever, you know, whatever the majority comes up with here, you know, I'm okay with, with putting it up. But just, I think the question will be the density, what they agree on, and the eight floors doesn't bother me. So that, that's my, why I say, Mayor, so if, I mean, if there's any changes made to the thing, and the, and the developer, or the property owners, and the, and Dennis wants to, you know, come up with whatever we're going to bring back up again, and just get it confirmed, get it changed, and have a, you know, go in there, you know, I don't have a problem with passing the eight stories. I just, I'd like to get, I'd like to know what we're going to truly do with the density. And of course, if we get the four bonus things there as well, I'm, I'm okay with that, but...
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm gonna have Commissioner Remoli.
Yeah, just really quick, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. Again, I, I know when you come before our, the commission, you have sort of an idea of what you want, what works best for you. I think this is all about compromise. And I, I think that being able to have those compromises and changes as we go through this and walk through this is very important. I, I know there's been a lot of change and discussion talked about tonight, but I like the fact that you are open to making those changes. And I would encourage you to go back to the drawing board and, and come up with that plan. Again, I, I don't have a problem with the eight floors either. It, it really is consistent with what's there. I also love the benefits to our city. It's a very important benefit. It's a half a million dollars if I'm not correct, if I'm correct. That's a lot of money that goes towards a lot of good in our city. And for that, I, I think it's something to really consider strongly. But again, the density part is, is something that you just need to come back to us with. Or do we make a motion tonight to reduce the density? Okay.
You have a couple of things you could do. You could make a motion to reduce the density tonight, and that way you already know for a second reading what that is.
Okay.
You could approve it as is, and have them do it between first and second reading, and come back at second reading with that lower density.
Well, that's, I, I would like to at least pass the motion tonight to go back to the drawing board with a density of 70. And, and then at that point, we can kind of look at it again, and if, if it makes sense for you all, if it doesn't, maybe we can go to 75. I don't know, I'm just thinking, I, I feel comfortable with 70. And I think you also, Vice Mayor, we're looking at that as well.
But aren't we the ones who get to dictate that, or they need to come back to us with-
Yeah, I mean, I would like to make the approval, to move forward with that.
We, we need to review on the microphone.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, I think it, like, making the approval for the eight stories and have, with the, with the exception of the density, they can come back and make an offer at that point in the second reading, is that correct? And then we can-
You can pass it as is, and let them make a proffer at the second reading.
Right, and what we'll do at the second reading is we'll come back to be able to show you what size are the units.
I think that, I think that's a great idea, Dennis. So I think, and listen, I'm not against the project, I just think bringing us some idea of the size of the rooms a little bit, maybe even possibly what the possible rents are, and what you could minimize your density to, to be profitable for the property owner, you know, and make it, you know, worthwhile for their, for them to do all that stuff. Because I know that when you go from 85 to 65 or something like that, that's a lot of loss. And I, and I don't expect that to happen, but, you know, I just think that, you know, maybe by showing, hey, this is what the size of this room is, this is the size of room, you know, and, and listen, if, if it's feasible at 75 or 80, I mean, if it looks good, you know, I mean, maybe it'll change everybody's mind, I don't know. But right now, I, I visualize it's 85 units per acre, I visualize two-bedroom apartments being at 1,000 square feet, okay? Or less. And that's, and that's not acceptable to me. I can tell you that without doubt. Okay, so that's something you need to do. But, you know, at that point, if there's no, if there's anybody else, I mean, I'd-
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
And, and this might be a big ask, I don't know, is, if there's a way to kind of give us a sense of the difference between the 85 to 75 to 70 to 65? I know 65 is too low probably, but at the same time, if we could kind of get a sense of it, I think it would help us, and I think it would help our residents understand better. And I think that's honestly the most important thing at this point, because I want to make sure, and I know, I, I don't see a lot of people getting up and speaking against it tonight, but I know our Planning and Zoning Board, they're all residents, and a lot of them live in that neighborhood. And, and they clearly voted against it, and they have a tendency to vote in favor of things like this. Plus, I also received some phone calls about it as well, from people who don't live necessarily right there, but had concerns about it, as I'm sure other people will receive calls as well. So I just, I would, I just kind of think we need a little more illustration that can help explain it a little bit better to people, so that we can understand.
So what we will do, if it passes tonight, before second reading, we will analyze all that, look at the room sizes, at the various density numbers. I don't know if we're going to go down to 65, but we'll, we'll look at the room-
Understood.
And come back and, and show you that these are good-sized apartments that will rent for good money, or good-sized condos that'll sell for good money.
Yeah, that's good. Other condos, there-
No, no, I, they, under the code, they could be condos, or they could be rentals. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, now, okay, well, I'll make a motion then, that we, we pass, this is what, 11.2, with the, for whatever Eve says.
It's adopted as is, and we'll schedule it for a, the second reading, where we'll bring the modifications. It will not affect the title, because we didn't put those details in the title, so you don't have to go to a third reading.
Thank you.
No, it's not going to be the next meeting. It'll probably be the, the first meeting in June, because there are other issues. June 10th.
June 10th.
Okay, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor. Do you have a second? I'll second it. Second from Commissioner Llewellyn and the City Clerk. If you please call the roll.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Remoli?
Yes, yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
No.
Mayor, the motion passed.
The motion passes. Three to one. Thank you.
I think the other commissioners sleeping.
All right. Motion. Eve, if you could please read all items.
We're missing a-
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah.
I can read the title though. Might as well start that.
Can you read it without a man here?
Without him being, yeah, I could.
Yep. Come, let's go ahead and read it.
You can read it, go. An ordinance of the City Commission to amend Chapter 28 Land Development Code to clean up language relating to accessory structures at Part 1 and Use Regulations, Article 105 Use Regulations for Residential and Open Space Zoning Districts at Section 10540 Townhouses in Order to Calculate Purvis Area. Amending Part 2 Site Development Regulations, Article 230 Special Floor Area Building Dimensions and Building Site Size Standards. At Section 230-40 Minimum Floor Areas for Dwelling and Lodging Units to Address Minimum Floor Area and Accessory Structures. Amending Part 3, entitled Special Zoning Requirement Districts. Subpart 1 Community CRA Form-Based Zoning District, Article 309 Additional Development Standards. At Section 30910 Complete Street Improvements to Modify the Building Line and Clarify References to the CRA and City. Amending Article 310 Building Types at 31010 Residential Building Types to Make Porches Optional. Amending Article 311 Frontage Types at Section 31120 Frontage Type Definitions and Standards to Modify Porch, Stoop, Door Yard, Shop, and Forecourt Frontages. Amending Part 7 Code Administration 725 Definitions at Section 72530 Terms Defined to Define Principal and Accessory Dwelling Units Providing for Codification, Conflict Severability, and an Effective Date. This is a Community Development Item.
Thank you. Eve, good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Were we supposed to have Commissioner Ryan to come back in the room?
I think they told him. Nobody told him? Oh, no. I was, I thought somebody went to get him while Eve was reading. Okay, yeah, well, maybe I need a little restroom break too.
Want to take two minutes or three minutes?
Yeah, let, let's come back in five minutes, guys, please. Thank you so much.
Restroom, I need one.
I was rushing my legs.
I know. I'm happy. Were you sleeping?
Yeah. Good job. Yeah, good job.
Thanks.
Yeah.
It's happening very well.
Yeah. It's happening very well.
It's happening very well.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Who gets sleep? Yeah. Yeah, I think you have it so easily.
Thank you.
Lymer.
Lymer.
Lymer. I love how you did it. Just with the extra song of the accent. I'm going to change my series, so you know they still. Because he likes to like stop, yeah. Yeah, that's it. No, you know, even the once male is really, he's not bad. It's like, you know, it's the series. I want to mention the green. That was awesome.
Much greater, thank you.
Yeah, George, much greater. Like perfect timing. Are you leaving?
No. All right, commission, I think we're getting ready to reconvene. If we could make our way back, please.
It's hard to say. It's like Peter Piper pick. Whatever.
Well, you read it, Ryan. You read it.
I didn't.
Okay.
And these two should be rather quick.
This code and community development. So we're with Eleanor coming up now.
Yes.
Eleven point three. Three. Yeah.
Yes.
Eleanor, are you ready? All right, we are reconvening the meeting at nine twenty-two.
Thank you, mayor. So this is a cleanup text amendment, as the city attorney said. We go through the code. This code was adopted back in twenty-ten. Can you bring up the presentation? Um, and every so often, we go, um, recommend cleanup language. We find ambiguous language or outdated language. And, um, we, every so often, quarterly, maybe biannually, we go through the code and propose text amendments. So this is one of those cleanup code text amendments. I'll go through each, um, item individually. So we're requesting to amend the townhouse zoning district, or the zoning regulations to prohibit the use of backyards to count towards the impervious, the pervious calculation for the site. So we found that a lot of townhouse development projects come in. They calculate that backyard area of the townhouse, those individual units, at, towards their pervious area. And then as those units sell off, those individual property owners come in and, and want to improve their backyard, adding pergolas and decks and pavers and all kinds of things, which take away from that pervious calculation of the overall site. And at some point, we have to say, no lon, your, the site no longer meets the pervious calculations. And we can have to say no to these single-family homeowners, these townhouse homeowners. And they don't understand why, because their neighbor got it, or their previous, um, tenant got it, but they were not allowed. So this eliminates that, um, the developer to use that area and to incorporate the pervious calculations on, on the common areas, either providing additional drainage capacity or, um, impervious, um, pavers. There's all types of things that they could do. And that will allow those single-family townhouse, um, owners, when they come in, to expand their backyard if they so desire. One specific development that rings in mind that we had these issues with was Aquabella. Aquabella wanted to improve, a lot of the tenants came in, or the homeowners came in, and wanted to add improvements to their backyard, and we would allow it to, to a point when the development exceeded their pervious calculation, and then we had to have that uncomfortable conversation. So this would eliminate that. Number two is unit sized. So we're requesting to reduce the minimum dwelling unit size from five hundred fifty square feet to three hundred square feet minimum. This eliminates the conflict with, um, accessory dwelling units, which we just recently passed, and allows for smaller homes to be built in the city on some of our substandard lots. We have a lot of substandard lots specifically in the northwest, and this will allow them to be developed with smaller homes. Uh, another cleanup is to identify that bicycle parking is not required for single-family home. It's just a silly requirement, so we're going to clean that up. In, under complete streets, we are, we're recommending to remove the reference to the CRA redevelopment plan and allow the community of, del, excuse me, community development director to approve street furnishing. This came into play specifically with one-on-one, um, Dania apartments. They, the street furnishings that were identified in the CRA redevelopment plan were outdated and antiquated. They were proposing more modern street furnishing, which we approved. So this would allow for that discretion of the community development department. Residential building types, these amendments would change porches and balconies from being required to optional for single-family and duplex, um, building types. We see a lot of variance requests comes in, um, for this, to eliminate the porches. We want to rely on the architect's design for these developments and not restrict them in the code. So we're recommending removing that. Frontage types, changes will eliminate the dimensional requirement for the different frontage types. It's similar to the porches. There was also dimensions required for the porches. They had to be eight feet and six feet. It was, it was a burden, and we noticed that there was a lot of variance applications coming in, and we want to take that away. Number seven, application submitted requirements. This change adds a traffic statement when less than fifty PM peak trips are generated by a proposed project. This has been staff's policy, but we want to put it in the code, so it's a requirement for this traffic analysis. Terms defined, it's just adding some definitions, accessory dwelling unit, dwelling unit and transit hub. It's just adding definitions. Planning and zoning board, um, did hear this item. There was one board member that amended the motion by approving the request to amend the motion by eliminating the minimum three hundred square foot for residential dwelling unit. Planning and zoning board unanimously recommended approval of the amendment as amended. So removing that three hundred, keeping it at the five fifty is what the board requested. Staff still recommending to the city commission to approve the proposed amendments as presented to you with that amendment, and it's up for the board for discussion. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Thank you, Eleanor. Do you have any? This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none. Do you have a motion?
I make motion, uh, mayor, uh, eleven point three to pass.
I have a motion from vice mayor to pass eleven point three. Do I have a second? Second. A second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor say aye. Aye. Item eleven point three passes unanimously. Thank you, Eleanor. Thank you, commission. We are on to item eleven point four. And Eve, if you could please read item eleven point four.
An ordinance of the city commission amending chapter eight land development code, part five signage and design regulations, article five oh five sign regulations at section five oh five forty detailed signs standards to modify wall sign regulations, amending section five oh five fifty prohibited signs to modify sign placement, amending section five oh five ninety signage regulations for the mixed-use CRA form-based zoning districts to authorize portable signs for all businesses and to modify wall sign regulations. Amending section five oh five one ten signage regulations for shopping centers and large retail establishments in commercial districts and planned mixed-use districts relating to projecting signs. Repealing section five oh five one forty signs exempt from certain, from certificate of compliance requirement and to substantially revise section five oh five one nine signage review to remove the approval process and fees providing for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date. This is a community development item.
Thank you, Eve. So this is another cleanup text amendment. It was included in the original text amendment, but at the, um, advice of the city attorney, it was, um, related to signs specifically, so she asked us to subdivide it out. So this is a separate text amendment for the sign cleanup code. Okay, again, the code was adopted in twenty-ten. It's a living document. As we used the document, we realized things that could be amended, that are antiquated, um, or just outdated. So the first one is detailed sign standards. This is allowing gallery edge signs, removing the combined signage requirement, allowing the permitted square footage to control. So instead of having a number of signs that you can have, it's the amount of square footage of signage. It's consistent with the, um, other signage within the code. And wall signs, removing the number of permissible wise, wall signs, allowing permitted square footage to control. Prohibited signs, the change is to remove just a duplicate provision in the code. And signage for mixed-use portable signs, remove reference to a restaurant and replace with general business reference. It was very specific to portable signs could only be used for restaurant, restaurants. Projection signs, eliminating the sign area and number of sign restrictions, again, allowing it for the square footage to dictate. Wall and gallery signs are to correct the section reference, just cleanup language. Signage for commercial to add reference to PMUD, PMUDSL zoning district to this regulation category to allow projection signs above the ground story. This is relevant in, um, Dana Point, Mason, mainly. Oops, sorry. Not keeping up. Certificate of Compliance, the amendment proposes to remove all references to certificate of compliance for signs and instead only requires a permit to be issued, and that's what we do with the department, so it's reflecting standards. Signage review, the provision continues the elimination of the certificate of compliance for signs by striking all reference to it throughout the code. And that's it. PNZ unanimously recommended approval at the April planning and zoning board meeting, and staff is also recommending approval of this at first reading. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Eleanor. This is a public hearing. Do I have anyone who wishes to speak for or against this item? Seeing none. Commissioner Ryan?
Uh, motion to approve, uh, the item, please. What is it, eleven point four?
Yes.
Yeah, motion to approve item eleven point four.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second from vice mayor. All in favor say aye. Thank you, commission. Item eleven point four passes unanimously. Next, we have item twelve, second reading ordinances. Eve, if you could please read item twelve point one.
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance of the city commission amending chapter eighteen pensions and retirement to amend article four entitled police and firefighters at section four eighteen dash forty-two benefit, benefit amounts and eligibility in order to include clarifying language to enable the full application of the twenty-twenty-two amendment as to benefits providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date. This is a finance item. I do know that there are a few speakers in the audience, but they're not here actually on this amendment. They'd like to talk about a different amendment, so I think they probably should have gone into general comments earlier in the, in the agenda.
Nevertheless, they have waited, and so we will hear from them, since they did not speak on, uh, the item that they, they did not get to speak under, uh, general comments. So up first, I have, uh, Michael Brown. Are you still here? If you could please come up and state your name and address for the record.
And before they do, I guess I'll just quickly speak on it unless Jamie wants to. It's, um, this was just cleanup language. Our actuarial statistics already provided for the funding for what's in here, and the language in twenty-twenty-two was supposed to take care of all of the, to allow for the actuarial funding. But there needs to be some clarification to allow the dispersal, so that's what this, this agenda item is.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, and City Clerk. My name is Mike Brown. I live at four six eight six Indigo Way, Vero Beach, Florida. I was, uh, I'm a retired firefighter from the city of Dania. I worked thirty years for the city of Dania Beach. I was the deputy fire chief when I retired. Uh, and I'm here tonight to discuss the funding of, uh, an amendment made on, to our pension ordinance on September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. And I guess you might wonder why I'm waiting four years, or three years to come back, but, uh, one of our firefighters passed away in December. A good friend of mine, a pioneer for our, first, one of two medics they hired for our advanced life support system that began our life support system in, uh, city of Dania, uh, passed away in December. And, uh, at that point, it became clear to us, when his wife's salary was cut by twenty percent. And he had a hundred percent, uh, he, he had an a hundred percent, um, where you pass your pension on, and he'd take a decreased pension to, to take the hundred percent. And, uh, so we went to the pension board, and the pension board did an actuarial study, and there was a cost attributed to that. And that cost, I guess, at a later date, or hopefully in your budget, twenty-five, twenty-six budget would be included. It was, I think they said you could, uh, you could, uh, run it over a ten-year period. And I think it was somewhere around sixty thousand dollars, so, uh, and city manager would know better than I, but I think that's what they told me. And, uh, anyways, we're just asking, when it does come in front of you, that you'd support it, it's, it's the spouses. That, I mean, it's not us. We, I hadn't, I'd been retired twenty years. I hadn't gotten a raise, and I appreciate the fact that you all were kind enough to give us that. But what, what, in the language, they didn't include the spouses that had opted for that benefit. And, uh, so anyways, that's what I'm here for tonight, and I hope you all would see fit to pass that when it's, when it comes up in your budget.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to the city of Dania Beach. All right, uh, we, next we have, uh, Michael Bernardo. Are you still here? Okay. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Bernardo. I live at, uh, twelve nine four Northwest one hundred and twenty-seventh Drive in Sunrise. Good evening, Madam Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Attorney. I'm a retired battalion fire chief, uh, with the city of Dania Beach Fire Rescue. I worked for, uh, had, was my honor serving thirty-two years, the citizens of Dania Beach. And I'm here tonight to also speak about the police and firefighters retirement system. Ordinance, ordinance number two oh two two dash zero two seven, which is in regards to the amendment entitled, uh, benefit amounts and eligibility. The ordinance was passed in September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and provides an additional monthly benefit of four hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents to every re, uh, retiree for his or her lifetime. The ordinance under section A of that, um, amended ordinance has an additional retirement benefit and states that effective October first, twenty-twenty-two, that four sixteen sixty-seven is payable to the retirees and the drop participants for his and her lifetime. But then there's a section that is, uh, section B, where the employees who retire on or after October first, twenty-twenty-two shall receive the, an additional monthly benefit of the four sixteen sixty-seven payable for his or her lifetime only. And then it goes on to say, survivors are not entitled to this additional benefit for anybody that was hired on October first, twenty-twenty-two, or after. Sadly, we had three firefighters pass away fairly, fairly recently. And, um, two of the firefighter spouses, um, have maintained that extra additional benefit that we're very grateful that the city of Dania Beach provided. But one of our retirees, Matt Sedar, who passed away in December twenty-twenty-four, his spouse, Debbie, also had the joint survivor pension benefit, but it was reduced by that number, the four sixteen sixty-seven. And, um, basically, all, all, all three of those firefighter paramedics were, um, hu, um, retired way before that October first, uh, twenty, 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 twenty-two, excuse me. So anyway, um, we, we did get an email from our pension board in reference to that, and they did explain in the email that, um, the ordinance for additional benefits was for, now this was in, in the actual email, all police, fire retirees, and beneficiaries. The email explained that we would receive a separate check for the four sixteen sixty-seven, less taxes, in the beginning of October of twenty-twenty-two. in the beginning of October of 2022. Then on November 1, the benefit would include that 41667, and we would continue to receive it. You know, they would include that in our regular benefit. We presented this issue to the Police and Fire Pension Board on January 13, 2025, and we actually referred to the actuary study that they did, which was completed by Gabriel Roder Smith on June 23, 2022. In that impact report, the proposed ordinance amended the plan, added the 41667 monthly supplement benefit effective October 1, 2022, payable for the life of any retirees, surviving joint petitioners, and drop participants who are receiving benefits. So we're very grateful to the city that that benefit was added to begin with because it's, it's very much appreciated. We basically respectfully request tonight that the Commission considers changing that language in the ordinance to include the 41667 supplement benefit for all surviving joint pensioners. We feel that the GSR actuary impact report dated on the 20th, June 23, 22, appropriately took the surviving joint pensioners into the, into account. So that's basically what we're asking tonight, and I greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bernardo. Appreciate your comments. And next, we have Deborah Zidare. If you please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Deborah Zidare. I live at 16135 Emerald Estates Drive in Weston, Florida. This is my son, Andrew. Andrew grew up in the fire department here in Dana, and you can see he really grew, so. Dana was our home. So my husband, Matt, was a firefighter paramedic in the city, hired in 1979. Matt and Jimmy Mulford were the first paramedics hired by the city of Dana Beach Fire Department. Matt's paramedic state certification number was 34. There are now over 100,000 paramedics in the state. Matt was voted firefighter of the year twice. He was union president several times and served on the Pension Board. Matt passed away at 72 years old on December 8, 2024. Sorry, this is hard for me. After a long battle with lung cancer, lung disease, and heart failure. So being here tonight.
For the proclamation.
It's kind of strange. Last summer, when we knew Matt was at the end of his life, we decided to call Kathy David, the pension secretary, to go over what my 100% survivor benefits would be. Obviously, Matt was worried. We were shocked to find out that I would be losing the $416.67 a month benefit that we had been receiving for the last few years. I am unfortunately the first widow of the retirees this is happening to. I have not received this benefit since January 2025. When I started to look further into this, I found out two of the retirees survivors were still getting this monthly benefit. Matt chose 100% survivor, worried about me all the time. So my monthly benefit has been reduced by 20%, which is quite a bit for me. None of the retirees were notified of this ordinance, which took away this benefit from the survivors. Matt and I were receiving this benefit all along before he passed. I know that the lawyer from the Pension Board sent a letter to inform the city that the board voted to reinstate this benefit. All I'm hoping for is that you will look into this on your next budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zidare, and my condolences and heartfelt to your family, and thank you to your husband for his service.
Thank you. Thanks for listening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I do realize that this item that is before us is not the one we are considering. I just want to make sure that this is something that we could consider in the budget, or is this, you know, what are our options as far as we're able to address what, what, what has been brought forward?
Absolutely. I, I, my condolences. We want Matt to be able to rest in peace, knowing that you're taken care of, been communicating with our CFO. It's, it's approximately $100,000 a year for the next five years. We will look into all our individual accounts and every single department. It's a very, very tight and challenging year, but not a greater challenge than what you're facing and what your family is facing. So I will pledge to continue to cut from my personal budget, and I know that this mayor and this commission will also look at their contingency and make some cuts so we can move forward for the next five years with this investment of $500,000, you know, for, for widows and, and people such as yourself. So I ask for your support in helping me and helping our CFO to be able to find the $100,000 per year for the next five years.
Yes, thank you, City Manager. And I, I can speak for myself. I don't know with the rest of the commission as well, that we certainly want to be able to support you in, in this difficulty, and all of our spouses of our firefighters, as we understand, you know, that you, they put their lives on the line for us and for our residents. So thank you for being so brave and coming and speaking aloud to this commission this evening. It's very greatly appreciated. So we will get back to the actual item at hand, and, oh, sorry. Commissioner Romoli?
Well, I just wanted to echo the City Manager's message and yours, Mayor, that we need to do whatever we can to make this happen. So we really need to dig deep. This is very, very important to me, and I know it is important to the entire commission here in our city. So we'll do all we can to look into this.
Thank you, Commissioner Romoli. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I don't know if we could have them answered tonight. First and foremost, thank you to your family for your service to Dana Beach. So, you know, we switched over to BSO, what, 1988?
Nine.
Eighty-nine, ninety is like the early nineties, right? So, how many, how many retirees would we be responsible for overall in like the next five years? You know, this is only for death and survivorship, but.
If, if, I don't have that answer, and rather than give you an incorrect answer, if, if I can get back to you all in regards to those numbers.
And it says there's no budgetary impact for this year.
No, no, on this ordinance that is being passed tonight, it's just a clerical cleanup.
Yeah, this is just amending language.
Yeah, and the, the actuarials numbers that you got when you, when the, the $400 was given included everything that has been paid out. So we're, we're, we're okay on this one. This is an additional change that they're asking for, which would be about $100,000 a year.
For?
Five years.
Five years, and then we would have to renew it after?
I'll let you know about that, but it's, according to the pension attorney, it's a hundred thousand for five years.
Okay. And then BSO is responsible for part of this pension too, correct? No, none of it? This is just a specific Dana Beach pension?
This is us.
Okay, for our, for our firefighters?
Yes.
Okay. And, and police officers?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is something that we had long before?
Correct.
Okay, understood.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Do we have anyone discussion or a motion? Vice Mayor?
I'll make a motion and pass item 12.1.
Have a motion from Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? Commissioner Llewellyn?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item 12.1 passes unanimously. Next, we have Discussion and Possible Action, item 13.1, Dana Beach Historical Society Museum Utilization of the Nyberg Swanson House, sponsored by yours truly, Mayor Davis. Eve, if you could read, please read item 13.2.
Yes, ma'am. A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the retroactive approval of an amendment to the Agreement with Business for the Arts of Broward County to insert the Dana Beach logo into the commissioned artist Say Adams' original "Lead With Love" mural at the City Marina, provided for conflicts and ineffective date community development.
Thank you, Eve. Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening. So this is an amendment to the agreement that was already approved for the Lead With Love mural that is installed at the Dana Beach Ocean Park Complex. This is the existing wall before the mural was installed.
And? I did. Go ahead. We're going to go out of order. I just.
You sure?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, it was really 13.1. I'm so sorry. It's been a long while.
You want me to continue? You're sure?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead with this. Yes, absolutely. We'll go back to 13.
So this is the existing wall that was approved for the mural. The city's contribution was $20,000 for the love mural. It's a Say Adams piece. There's a bunch of pieces going throughout Broward County. This was the second or third one. During installation, it was noticed that the city's name or tagline or anything was not incorporated in the mural. We reached out to the artist. We thought it was an opportunist time to showcase Dana Beach. We get a lot of visitors down to the Dana Beach Ocean Park Complex, and people don't even know they're in Dana Beach. Sometimes they think they're in Hollywood. Sometimes they think they're in Miami. So it was an opportunity for us to showcase our city and make sure everybody knows that they're at, when they're at our beach, they're in Dana Beach. So the artist did agree to incorporate the Dana Beach name on the left side and the See It, Live It, Love It on the right side. So no matter which way you look at this mural, you know you're in Dana Beach.
Love it.
Yes, it is a beautiful piece. It's really brightened up the beach. The colors are very vibrant. On a sunny day, it just really pops. It's beautiful. So yes, with this, there was an additional cost of $7,000. As you can see, those are the two side views. It's additional $7,000 to incorporate the name and the logo into the design. The original cost was $94,700. The city's contribution was only $20,000. They received sponsorships from things like FPNL to cover the additional costs. So the $7,000 is proposed, which would be a total of $27,000 of the city's cost for this mural. Staff is recommending, and the public, this did go to the Public Art Advisory Board. They did recommend approval retroactively. We had to seize the opportunity, unfortunately. The artist was out there doing the painting. We couldn't come back and retrofit it. It just wouldn't look the same. So I know the, the mayor did bring this up as, at her comments in the March meeting to the commission to retroactively go back. So this is just cleaning that up and making sure we can make that payment from the Public Art Fund. The staff's recommending approval. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Eleanor, for that presentation. Vice Mayor?
I, I think that's a great idea, and it looks really good, and I think that we should give you consent to go forward with that. That's, without an issue, there shouldn't even be discussion on it. Discussion's over. Yes, you can do it.
Oh, it is getting, it's getting late. It is getting late. Commissioner Llewellyn?
I, I would echo those comments, and I, and I also would like to say thank you to the artist for going ahead and doing that because he didn't have to. He could have said no, and it's his work. And I don't even think he has it on the other ones. I don't think he has the actual cities on the other ones.
He does.
There is, and Fort Lauderdale La Solis was.
Yeah, I look at that one every.
The name of La Solis was on there.
Oh, it says.
That's when we realized we need to seize the opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. No, well, thank him for doing that.
Yes, and I will just say, we saw, it says La Solis love. It had plantation love, and we did not have Dana Beach love. And I, now I think ours looks the absolute best out of everybody. So if we could have a motion and a second, can we just get consensus on this, this Discussion and Possible Action? All in favor say aye? All right, item 13.2 passes, and I read item 13.1. So Joanna, please come on up and let's read the Dana Beach Historical Society Museum Utilization of the Nyberg Swanson House.
Joanna Grenet, President of the Dana Beach Historical Society. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. Thank you, Mayor, for sponsoring this item. A few commission meetings ago, I did a presentation, and I probably waffled on too much, as I usually do, and probably neglected to state that the Dana Beach Historical Society actually would love to use the Newburg Swanson House as its permanent home. And I just want to say something, actually, so, sorry, I didn't memorize it. So we're a nonprofit organization, and some nonprofits open and then close after they've served their purpose. But the Dana Beach Historical Society is an ongoing organization that needs to get its roots firmly established so it can truly serve its members and purpose to the public. So with that, I ask the commission if you would seriously think about the Dana Beach Historical Society using the Newburg Swanson House as its home.
Thank you for that presentation, Joanna, and Vice Mayor?
Yes. You know, Joanna, I, I don't know what the city has to say about it in general, but I think it's a good idea. I think that I would be happy with it if, if the commission is in, under the supervision and approval that everything that's done or whatever has been approved by the, the manager and the deputy city manager to approve whatever that needs to go on, and anything that they, is required. If it's not, if you couldn't handle that requirement, then, you know, then I would not be forward. But I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I think there's nothing better than to have the historical society and historically, historical house. But that's my opinion, but that's how I feel about it. Amen.
And actually, can I just say something? Director Kathy Semenara did a lot of research, and she noticed, or went back, and the designation of the Newburg Swanson House states that it's stipulated that the Newburg Swanson House should be a museum.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Joanna, we have Commissioner Romoli, please.
Joanna, as you know, I am 100% in favor of you all being in there and doing that. Again, I just want to go back to my previous discussions with you and your group. Do you have set hours that you'd like, that you are going to be in that house?
We don't actually have set hours right now, but we definitely would be open for set hours every week or every weekend, when there would be set hours where people would, volunteers or board members would be there to open the house to the public.
Yeah, because I think it's important to at least set a standard for the time you're going, like, if you want to start by two days a week, I think you need to stick to that two days a week on a consistent basis so that there's consistency. I, I would hate for someone to be told, oh, I went to the museum, the Newburg Swanson House on Saturday, and they go, and it's closed.
Yeah.
So that would be my only stipulation, is to make sure whatever you start with, that you are consistent, and then work yourself up to hopefully a four or five-day-a-week type of museum.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you can commit to that, I'm 100,000% in favor of you all being there. So thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
It's up to you to make, yeah, but the City Manager to make you work it up.
If you decide to proceed with this, I would just have an agreement prepared so that we know the terms, the conditions, the hours, et cetera, the responsibilities of each party, and that would come back.
And I, and I want to, I, because I did have a meeting with Commissioner Romoli. Because when, when we were up in Tallahassee, when we were the mayor and the commissioner, we've gone with all of you. But for example, we go to the Old Capitol, which is now a museum. So very important that you get with your board, and you don't overstretch yourself. But for example, we're going to open Friday and Saturday as a museum, and if it's 10:00 to 4:00, or 11:00 to 6:00, that you guys can agree to those times, and we could share it with our electeds.
Yep.
But we want to make sure that, that if we're advertising that it's a museum and we're open, we want to know when you're ready and to make sure that it is staffed.
Absolutely. I mean, at the moment, because we're not actually there, we're not in there. I mean, we can say, yes, we'll open Saturday, Sunday, Monday, when, whatever, but once we're actually in there, we'll just, we will have a plan, and we, we will stick to it and be very organized, too.
Thank you. Do we have consensus?
Yes.
For the Dana Beach Historical Society to use the Newburg Swanson House as their For the Dania Beach Historical Society to use the Newburg Swanson House as their permanent home?
Yes, I do.
Yes, we have consensus. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanna, and congratulations to you and all and your entire team for working so hard on this. We look forward, we know you're going to do a good job, and so we look forward to our new museum.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right. And lastly, for, we have item thirteen point three sponsored by me. This is an item that came, or an opportunity that came to me back in February of 2025. With everything going on, I kind of laid it to rest, but as I spoke to some of our seniors, you saw Ms. Vivian, who we had given the award to tonight for the Earth Day. Her seniors meet every single week at the, for social seniors at PJ Millie. And there was expression from some of those seniors that they aren't going to miss their summertime meetings because they're used to seeing each other every single week. So they usually meet, and so also I know that gracefully aging usually breaks for the summertime, and I'm not sure about the social seniors, if they keep that up, but I know gracefully aging meets every Tuesday and Thursdays except for the summertime. And so once I started hearing the rumblings about how they were going to miss each other and, you know, different things, this opportunity came back to me as a reminder, and it is a tour that Broward County, that is hosted within Broward County by Simply Healthcare, and it is a health and wellness tour for seniors only. They would be able to pick the different types of events they would like to have related to health education, wellness activities, and have, what, they can have Zumba, they can do smoothies. I did do an event with them over last summer where they did a cooking show, and they had a nutritionist come in and talk to them about healthy eating and different things like this. So it is a tour that is provided by Simply Healthcare at no cost to the city. It would just be a simple opportunity for all of our seniors to have a senior session together so that they could have a little collaboration and focus on health and wellness. And so what would be required is just a location, and the thought was that IT Parker may be a good location for that, and have them have one joint summer senior session together focused on health and wellness for the seniors in the community. If we could find a date, there would not necess, they have their own staff, they have their own doctors, they have their own nutritionists. So it really, other than the location, date, time and place, and solidifying a date for the summertime, that was the request based on the need or based on the, based on the sentiments of the seniors to want to get together one time in the summer. So with that, I'm just requesting to be able to explore that opportunity and to see if there's a date and time and place that we can solidify, and then if we can do that, then I'd bring it back as a formal request, but I wanted to bring this opportunity before you at this time. So I do see some comments here. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yeah, I just have a couple very re-questions. Is this a one-time thing?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know if there's a budgetary impact? I mean, I think obviously using the facility, but.
I would take that out of my contingency fund.
But is there any other, any other cost to the city?
No.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have consensus? Thank you, Commission. We have consensus to move forward. City Manager, I will get with you and for a date and time that would work for everyone, and we can market it, and we just, you know, a little fun summer session for the seniors, and they miss each other. So thank you for supporting that. Appreciate it. Next, are we getting there? We have no appointments, so we have Commission comments, and that would be Commissioner Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be very brief because it's late, and I know everybody's tired and wants to get out of here. But first of all, sadly, we lost a, one of our pioneers of our city suddenly over the weekend, Terrell McCombs, who frequently came to these meetings, a member of the Historic Society, correct? And I think Dania Beach Improvement Committee and some other things. And for those who don't know, he did pass on Saturday very suddenly, and there's a service this weekend, I believe Saturday. So just wanted to send my condolences to the family, to his wife in particular. Secondly, on a more positive note, we had the ribbon cutting today for City Place. For those who are not familiar, City Place is a building that's just, what is it, south of here? Southwest, I guess, sort of, of here? That is an affordable housing project that is fantastic. Just what I'm going to say. It's just really done very well. And we did the ribbon cutting today, very well attended by all of us, city team as well, as well as our mayor of the county, Beam Furr, as well as a number of other people that revolve in the projects, as well as residents, because people have already moved in. And I know, I spoke to several people, I know several of you also spoke to people who are already living there. They love it, and it is true affordable housing. It is truly something that is, something that people can afford to live in, and they're beautiful places, and they did a very nice job. And I, it was making me a little nostalgic today because I remember back in 2020, when our manager and I did talk about this and bringing Francisco Rojo here, and he was interested in doing the project, and we had a big discussion about vetting developers and vetting projects at the time, because that was one of my big initiatives early on, it still is. But there was a whole discussion about going down and looking at the other projects, which she did, and a group of people went, if I'm not mistaken, because I remember, yeah, yeah, because I do remember that we, we had a conversation about it when she came back. And it was good to see that the projects are not just built for the moment. They do last, and they continue to maintain them. And so he is one of those people that does a really good job. So I think everybody's going to end up being very pleased with it in the long run. It's a nice addition to our city. And in conjunction with that, something, a conversation that came up today, and I was speaking with Beam Furr, who is our mayor, but is also our representative city commissioner from the county, and he's very proud to have Dania Beach as part of his district, because we are not just doing really great things, and he said that today, and it's a second time I've heard him say it in a public forum about all the great things that we're doing here. But we had this conversation about how we are leading as a city and how we are doing things that other cities are watching and are trying to copy at this point, because we're doing things the right way. So it's just something that is, it's a testament to the team effort and what everybody's been doing and working together and trying to get things done the right way. I mean, you saw tonight even the questions that were coming up with this, with these zoning issues, just trying to be, make sure that we're hitting every button, and we're, like, we're not just passing things. We're really trying to delve into things and trying to make sure that we're doing things the right way. And our city team is doing a fantastic job trying to implement the things that we are bringing to them. So I just want to say kudos to everybody, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn, Commissioner Ramoni.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to reach out to Janet McCombs and her entire family. I still can't even believe it. I think I talked to Terrell a week ago or so, and it's very, very difficult to comprehend, and we wish her and her entire family the best at this time. I know the struggle of loss too well too much. So anyhow, our heart goes out to their entire family. Regarding the discussion about the new zone on Dania Beach Boulevard, I agree with the mayor who had mentioned the P and Z, who actually denied it. And I think it's extremely important, as a member of the P and Z for many years, a lot of times, we never really delved into the project as thoroughly as our Commission does. And I'm saying this because I don't want them to feel like I disrespect their decision. I highly regard their decision, just like the mayor does and this whole entire Commission. But there are times where, and I know because I sat on that board, we don't always ask the right questions, because I don't think we are engaged enough to understand what to ask. And so if they're listening tonight, and certainly I'm going to reach out to every one of them myself and let them know why I agreed to go forward with this project and what my reasons were, because I do, like the mayor said, I do respect them, and I respect everybody who's been on all our volunteer boards. And that also brings me, brings up the question that I think I had brought up once before. I would love to hear from our boards at a Commission meeting, like, for instance, the P and Z, we don't really need to listen to, or the Pension Board is not necessary to come here, but I think that the Education Board, the Marine Advisory Board, with the Parks and Rec Board, and there might be one or two that I missed.
Advisory Board?
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to hear really what they're doing. I think we appoint people, and then we forget about it. Or, well, not necessarily forget about it, but we just don't know what they're doing and how we can help them further along what they're, what they're trying to accomplish. So I would like to see if there's a way that we can ask the mayor to come and make a presentation, maybe once a quarter?
A hundred percent.
Okay, yeah. I don't know how we want to proceed by doing that.
I mean, we discussed that, but I think we just need to put it into motion. I know I have a meeting with the Public Art Advisory Board on Monday on the nineteenth of August here.
And that's another one, I think that's important, yeah.
We do have a lot of exciting things coming up, and I was, I was going to touch on that, but I think it's important for them, as the leaders of these boards, to know that their voices do matter, and we really do care about what's going on.
Absolutely.
In their, in their boards and what they're discussing and what they're working on.
Yeah, and I want them to know how important they are to us and the city to be on those, those volunteer boards. And I don't know whether it's even possible, I know we're funding the Chamber, but I'd love to hear from them once a quarter, just to hear what their progress is and what they're doing, and is there something we can do to help them move forward with whatever their initiatives are? So anyway, something to think about, and I thank everybody very much for a long night. Thanks for everybody hanging in there, and especially Joanna, all you guys who stood around and listened to all of us talking and yakking, and I'm glad that we were able to move your agenda forward. So thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoni. Commissioner Ryan?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, it's great to see how far the Historical Society has come. We literally had no Historical Society at one point to, I think, one was created in 2018, and now they're moving into our newly restored Newburg Swanson House. So it's great to see the progress that has made, something that truly came from the ashes, if you ask me. And yeah, with that, the city lost a pioneer and a great ambassador in Terrell McCombs. He's a personal friend of mine, my family's for a long time, lifelong Dania resident. He was a treasure trove of information. Every time you met him, he gave you a great piece of information about the city, whether it's current, historical. He was a very intelligent man. We lost him suddenly and tragically, and my deepest condolences go out to his family, his friends, and especially Mrs. McCombs. Rest in peace, Terrell. We're going to miss you a lot.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it under twenty minutes. First of all, I do want to express my condolences to Terrell and his family. You know, I happened to be over there across the street that same morning, about a half an hour after the ambulance left, and I found out right away, and it just kind of shocked me. But again, he has, he's been a Dania part of my sister, had lived on, yeah, right back behind him for years, and they were pretty good friends when they, as neighbors for like fifteen years, and it's just, it's just a shock to a longtime Dania resident be gone. I do want to tell you a couple things. Just, I'm going to go back real quick on the boards and the Chamber and stuff, you know. That was brought up a while back, and I think if we could take, in one week, one meeting we have the Marine Advisor Board, then the next meeting we have another board, the next meeting we have another board. I think by the time you go through the three or four or five boards, it'll be a rotation that they'd be back every four, three times a quarter, three times a year, you know what I'm saying? And I think that if we set that on a plan, it would work the way. Chamber is not as important because the Chamber does invite us all to their, they do meet often, and we all are invited, and all, you know, and the businesses are invited, and the businesses have brought, you know, new businesses and residents with it. But, you know, maybe once a year, the Chamber would come and just report on their thing, but I just think that that was a good idea, Commissioner Ramoni, and I think that's something we should move forward with. Pardon me?
We used to do it. They used to.
Yeah. But they've gotten a lot better, too, about a lot of the stuff they're doing. I think, and I think what, the reason the Chamber's gotten a lot better, one of the reasons why is because there's a lot more to do in Dania Beach now than there used to be. So it keeps them busy. I do want to share with you a personal thing, that I went to New Orleans for the first time, and it is a different city. I had a good time. Special lady and I went together, and it happened to be for my birthday, but the thing that's cute about it is that my best friend, Tony, his birthday was on May eighth, and mine was on May sixth, and he is, he was going to the airport, and he had no idea I was going, and I bought a ticket, and I walked him to him behind the airport, and I shocked him. He's like, and so we ended up spending our birthdays together in New Orleans. So it was pretty funny to watch somebody get shocked that they didn't expect you to be going same place with him. Huh? That's sweet. That's right. And I did dance with him, okay? After a couple beers. I don't know how many people, I don't know if, the new building on, this, I'll finalize with this, the new building on Griffin Road called Griffin Living, they invited me by there to have a birthday drink, and I went, stopped dinner, and he showed me something that is really truly amazing, that I think, I, have you seen it, Joyce?
I have not. I was invited.
Okay, you better not. I'm going to spoil it for you. But I'm going to tell you that, in the, first of all, the restaurant's absolutely beautiful. It's really an asset to Griffin Road. But if you go there, have you seen it yet? If you go there and they go into the stairwell, he took every picture that's on that wall of all the past mayors of Dania Beach and.
Up to our current mayor.
Up to our current mayor, and there's portraits painted this big of every head on the wall from the top floor down to the bottom, and it's truly amazing, the pictures that are, and they're so real that I felt like when I saw my uncle, I thought he was still there, you know, because, so if you, if you go there, Napuia, you've got, I think every city employee, the building department, everybody should go see what they did in that building. It's just, it's, it's something I've never seen before, but I wanted to share that with you. It would be worth a trip out there, just to go out there, and even if you don't go to the restaurant, to ask them to see the stairwell. And that concludes my report.
Well, that is a shock. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yours is right there all by itself, too.
Because you were added after.
Oh, my goodness. All right. It's okay, you know, in particular, no. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
We have pictures of anybody was.
I do, too.
I want to say happy belated birthday to you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'm a little old now.
Okay.
Okay, that's enough of that birthday stuff. Thank you.
But I do, I want to thank the Vice Mayor also for giving me a call and letting me know about Terrell McCombs, like, within a very short.
I would say.
Very short time period. I literally was in shock, so it was very hard for me to, it still is, but in the moment, I, I just, it was very hard to digest. They would sit right here in this audience, wait so many times, all the way to the very end, and, you know, truly a pioneer, some of the, you know, truly an example of how we should all aspire to be just a good, good, good human being to the core. And so we're really going to miss him, and my deepest heartfelt condolences to Janet, and she's going through a lot, I can't imagine. So with that, my deepest condolences to the family, and we will be back on Saturday to be in support at the services. I do have thirteen items that I was going to share with you all, but, no, I can read them off, but I've decided to choose because I am a mayor in the mood. I had thirteen items that I was going to share, but I am beyond my capacity right now. So I'm going to just take a couple, two, three, and share them with you. It's good that the manager got the Take Your Child to Work Day, but that was so good. It's good that the manager got the Take Your Child to Work Day, but that was so good because of the fact that if you saw the kids light up in those rooms, if they, they work with technology, I surprised them. It was just, the kids had an amazing day. They, they came back so excited, and to me, it really just speaks to, to our staff, to what they do. I got to give them a little speech, but it was just that, they just, the kids were so excited to see what their parents do, and so I'm glad that we do that here in the city of Dania Beach. We also had our very first National Day of Prayer. And, you know, whenever you would do something inaugural, you don't know how it's going to pan out, you have an idea. The city manager, we talked about it, we talked about it with the team, we brought different faiths together to talk about one topic of unity, and it was just a good, 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 good energy, good vibe, and really just something to bring unity to our community. So I want to thank the city manager, thank everyone who came out, our colleagues who participated in that, because it just, it was, it was a great idea and it was something that was out of the box, and I think we got some great feedback that we could improve on in the future. Mulliken Park ribbon cutting again was just phenomenal. Thanks again to Parks and Rec for that. I did get some good feedback on the Pioneer that's come, that came out. So kudos to Nanette and Suzette for doing a great job on that. My neighbors came to me and they're like, we love it, we love it, and they're so excited about the new water meters, so we can't wait to get those. I will give you a bit of news about the creative visions. We are moving forward with that project on Monday, so we're going to have some new public art that's going to be coming before the Commission to vote on. We got some pretty exciting submissions, so we go through the process. I don't get to vote then, but I kind of get to see what's going on. So I'm very excited that we're continuing to bring new public art opportunities to the city of Dania Beach. Where's my other one? I'm just not going to go over all these. Well, since Vice Mayor wants to challenge me, I went to the Mayor's Gala, we had Arbor Day, we had Fleet Week, the Women's Edge, no, but I'm really not going to go over all of these. What I want to do is, I really do have a lot, all of them, but I just want to say, I want to thank Parks and Rec. My last new one was the 5K Walking Club, and I was very excited about that because we've had the partnership with the city of Hollywood. It is a nice trail where we get to wake up early in the morning on a Friday and get fit and get to walk a 5K first thing in the morning, ocean, sunshine, and by nine o'clock, we're done and we're full of energy. So we're going to be, you know, promoting that, and if anybody wants to just have a nice, healthy way to kick off their weekend, then join us on Get Fit Fridays. And with that, yes, every Friday at eight o'clock in the morning, so please join us. I won't be there, so if one of you guys want to join and do a 5K, please feel free. And thank you so much, and meeting adjourned, everyone. Thank you, good night.
Good night, everyone.
This is huge.